Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and our very own Tenille towns for singing our national anthem. I would like to read our land acknowledgement. The city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver Cree-Dene and Métis people as the original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play on Treaty VIII territory within Turtle Island and acknowledge these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time in memorial. Thank you. Moving on to the adoption of the previous council minutes, recognizing councillor O'Connor.
Thank you Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move that council adopt the minutes of city council meeting held January 29th as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order seeing no one in the queue with concerns. I'll call the question. Please vote. And that's carried unanimously. Moving on to the adoption of today's agenda, recognizing councillor Blackmore.
I'd move that council adopt the agenda for February 12th, 2024 as presented.
That motion is in order. I had to process what you said. I thought you said February 24th, but okay. That motion is in order. I'll, seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that too is carried unanimously. Now moving on to the delegation portion of our meeting. As for those who may be watching, delegations are encouraged welcome at council. We have two potential time slots depending on the meeting. If we are meeting in the evening, there is a 6:00 PM session that is available. Today, we aren't meeting in the evening, so the only time slot was 3:00 PM. We do ask that you let us know ahead of time. The form is really simple. It's online. And today, two delegations have let us know ahead of time. First, I'm going to introduce Mr Keith Curtis, who we all know from the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital Foundation. If you'd like to come up, sir, your microphone is on whenever you're ready. Take your five minutes to present and then I'll open it up to council for questions. Once you're set up, Mr Curtis, if you just, for those who are watching, just introduce yourself on the mic would be appreciated.
So my name is Keith Curtis and I'm the executive director from the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital Foundation. And I'm just here to give an update as to what the foundation has been up to and the fact that we just finished our strategic renewal plan following and coming out of our capital campaign for the new hospital. So it's taken a bit to get us here, but we're finally there. So just kind of a bit of a quick summary, the fund development.
Sorry, Mr Curtis, could you just pull your mic just a little bit closer to you?
Turn. Sorry.
There we go. Perfect.
There we go. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Just yeah, so just kind of a bit of a executive summary overview of our strategic renewal plan. Our fund development is our number one goal and that's raising funds for healthcare within the North Region and specifically Area 9 and the surrounding areas. So our fund development, we're looking to enhance quality care, enhance advanced technology, advanced equipment, professional development of medical personnel, and enhance programming within the hospital itself. We are continuing to serve Northwest Alberta, Northeastern B.C. and parts of the Territory simply because that's what our hospitals serves currently. We are committed to ensuring and enhancing our DEIB, so diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. The board is a strictly governance board working completely within fiduciary vision and growth. And we also recognize that one of the main areas that we need to continue to work on is regional, provincial, and federal partnerships with other foundations in order to ensure that we bring healthcare, the best healthcare to Northern Alberta. So we did come up with, we shortened our vision to be excellence in healthcare and our mission being caring for the future of healthcare in our region. We strongly, our purpose, we're strongly advocate for what our region and residents' wellness and care needs are, keeping them close to home by enhancing, advancing health and healthcare in our region through fund development and stewardship. Our shared goals are feeling safe, which includes equality, fairness, belonging, and inclusiveness, wellness, balance, fun, humor, and adventurous, progress, honesty, communication, knowledge, innovation, and being effective, impact, service, love, compassion, and community, and quality, integrity, and duty in being committed. We identified critical success indicators, demonstrating impact, equipment funded, programming funded, professional development as well, communication, which we are struggling with currently because of turnover in that area and some illnesses, advocacy, so advocating for healthcare needs for Northern Alberta and for our region in specific, connectivity, remaining connected to the different groups within our region, including our MLAs, our MP and city council, as well as county and the MD of Greenview, adequately resourced internal teams, so continuing to professionally develop our philanthropic team, fund development sustainability, so looking at the long term of where our funds are going, which means an increasing and growing our endowment fund for long-term viability of not just healthcare but of the foundation as well, and maintaining a governance board. Goals, our North Star or number one or BHAG, whatever you want to call it, is to grow a 10-year average year-on-year fund development capacity target of $7.5 million by 2029 and ensuring a sustainable financial base to support future initiatives. Strategic, increase awareness of funding in our region, prospect, attract, and retain new donors, engage with donors, strengthen endowments, philanthropic employer of choice, actively advocate for enhanced healthcare within our region, and to align funding initiatives with our health authority priorities. So part of our key funding development pillars, first one is sustainability, so this includes our endowment campaign, which we have not launched at this point, but are currently working on, increasing our monthly giving or our circle of care, as we call it, within the foundation, increasing and maintaining planned and legacy giving as the greatest amount of wealth is about to transfer hands from an older generation to a younger generation, and reducing the taxes that those individuals have to pay in order to, as they pass on, and working towards digital philanthropy. Strategic, the Kidney Care Centre, which we are, the Sargent Family Kidney Care Centre, which is currently being developed at the old QE2 hospital in the old cancer unit, has been approved by AHS and is moving forward. It is a temporary facility and temporary solution, temporary solution under what we're currently working is five to eight years. At that point, then, we will look at expanding again. The mammography care unit, which is a partnership between the Alberta Cancer Foundation and ourselves and other foundations within the North, so bringing a mobile unit to the back to the North, which will serve in the smaller rural communities, almost 72 different communities, it'll serve in our region. And then Wellness House, which we are partnering with Rotary, the Rotary Clubs of Grand Prairie and the Wellness House Committee to bring the Ken Sargent House to provide temporary housing for people who need that when they come for healthcare treatments. And so operational is mental health, along with mental health, developing youth life skills camps. That's something that Alberta Mental Health through AHS has identified as a program that they had great success with in the past. And moving forward, there are two different ones. One is LEGO, which is aimed at all youth, and the other one is a youth Indigenous program. We have secured funding for the youth Indigenous program for the next three years and are hoping to finalize the fourth year as well. And we are working currently with a donor on the LEGO program as well. They've requested funding for a mobile health unit for the Grand Prairie and Region area that we are currently working with a donor on as well. Enhance mental health equipment, so that's everything from a snuslin room to equipment that they need within the facilities that they operate. And then a youth and family transitional housing and a house that they would like to see built that youth can access between in-service, inpatient services and out-service patients, so somewhere they can go as they transition back into society. Cardiac care, it's a, we would like to see, and something that the Northern doctors have identified as a large concern, is a fully functioning cardiac care unit, which we currently do not have. That includes a catheterization lab in the North and advocacy.
Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and our very own Tenille towns for singing our national anthem. I would like to read our land acknowledgement. The city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver Cree-Dene and Métis people as the original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play on Treaty VIII territory within Turtle Island and acknowledge these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time in memorial. Thank you. Moving on to the adoption of the previous council minutes, recognizing councillor O'Connor.
Thank you Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move that council adopt the minutes of city council meeting held January 29th as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order, seeing no one in the queue with concerns. I'll call the question. Please vote. And that's carried unanimously. Moving on to the adoption of today's agenda, recognizing councillor Blackmore.
I'd move that council adopt the agenda for February 12th, 2024 as presented.
That motion is in order. I had to process what you said. I thought you said February 24th, but okay. That motion is in order. I'll, seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that too is carried unanimously. Now moving on to the delegation portion of our meeting. As for those who may be watching, delegations are encouraged welcome at council. We have two potential time slots depending on the meeting. If we are meeting in the evening, there is a 6:00 PM session that is available. Today, we aren't meeting in the evening, so the only time slot was 3:00 PM. We do ask that you let us know ahead of time. The form is really simple. It's online. And today, two delegations have let us know ahead of time. First, I'm going to introduce Mr Keith Curtis, who we all know from the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital Foundation. If you'd like to come up, sir, your microphone is on whenever you're ready. Take your five minutes to present and then I'll open it up to council for questions. Once you're set up, Mr Curtis, if you just, for those who are watching, just introduce yourself on the mic would be appreciated.
So my name is Keith Curtis and I'm the executive director from the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital Foundation. And I'm just here to give an update as to what the foundation has been up to and the fact that we just finished our strategic renewal plan following and coming out of our capital campaign for the new hospital. So it's taken a bit to get us here, but we're finally there. So just kind of a bit of a quick summary, the fund development.
Sorry, Mr Curtis, could you just pull your mic just a little bit closer to you?
Turn. Sorry.
There we go. Perfect.
There we go. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Just yeah, so just kind of a bit of a executive summary overview of our strategic renewal plan. Our fund development is our number one goal and that's raising funds for healthcare within the North Region and then specifically Area 9 and the surrounding areas. So our fund development, we're looking to enhance quality care, enhance advanced technology, advanced equipment, professional development of medical personnel, and enhance programming within the hospital itself. We are continuing to serve Northwest Alberta, Northeastern B.C. and parts of the Territory simply because that's what our hospitals serves currently. We are committed to ensuring and enhancing our DEIB, so diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. The board is a strictly governance board working completely within fiduciary, fiduciary vision and growth. And we also recognize that the main, one of the main areas that we need to continue to work on is regional, provincial, and federal partnerships with other foundations in order to ensure that we bring healthcare, the best healthcare to Northern Alberta. So we did come up with, we shortened our vision to be excellence in healthcare and our mission being caring for the future of healthcare in our region. We strongly, our purpose, we're strongly advocate for what our region and residents' wellness and care needs are, keeping them close to home by enhancing, advancing health and healthcare in our region through fund development and stewardship. Our shared goals are feeling safe, which includes equality, fairness, belonging, and inclusiveness, wellness, balance, fun, humor, and adventurous, progress, honesty, communication, knowledge, innovation, and being effective, impact, service, love, compassion, and community, and quality, integrity, and duty in being committed. We identified critical success indicators, demonstrating impact, equipment funded, programming funded, professional development as well, communication, which we are struggling with currently because of turnover in that area and some illnesses, advocacy, so advocating for healthcare needs for Northern Alberta and for our region in specific, connectivity, remaining connected to the different groups within our region, including our MLAs, our MP and city council, as well as county and the MD of Greenview, adequately resourced internal teams, so continuing to professionally develop our philanthropic team, fund development sustainability, so looking at the long term of where our funds are going, which means an increasing and growing our endowment fund for long-term viability of not just healthcare but of the foundation as well, and maintaining a governance board. Goals, our North Star or number one or BHAG, whatever you want to call it, is to grow a 10-year average year-on-year fund development capacity target of $7.5 million by 2029 and ensuring a sustainable financial base to support future initiatives. Strategic, increase awareness of funding in our region, prospect, attract, and retain new donors, engage with donors, strengthen endowments, philanthropic employer of choice, actively advocate for enhanced healthcare within our region, and to align funding initiatives with our health authority priorities. So part of our key funding development pillars, first one is sustainability, so this includes our endowment campaign, which we have not launched at this point, but are currently working on, increasing our monthly giving or our circle of care, as we call it, within the foundation, increasing and maintaining planned and legacy giving as the greatest amount of wealth is about to transfer hands from an older generation to a younger generation, and reducing the taxes that those individuals have to pay in order to, as they pass on, and working towards digital philanthropy. Strategic, the Kidney Care Centre, which we are, the Sargent Family Kidney Care Centre, which is currently being developed at the old QE2 hospital in the old cancer unit, has been approved by AHS and is moving forward. It is a temporary facility and temporary solution, temporary solution under what we're currently working is five to eight years. At that point, then, we will look at expanding again. The mammography care unit, which is a partnership between the Alberta Cancer Foundation and ourselves and other foundations within the North, so bringing a mobile unit to the back to the North, which will serve in the smaller rural communities, almost 72 different communities, it'll serve in our region. And then Wellness House, which we are partnering with Rotary, the Rotary Clubs of Grand Prairie and the Wellness House Committee to bring the Ken Sargent House to provide temporary housing for people who need that when they come for healthcare treatments. And so operational is mental health, along with mental health, developing youth life skills camps. That's something that Alberta Mental Health through AHS has identified as a program that they had great success with in the past. And moving forward, there are two different ones. One is LEGO, which is aimed at all youth, and the other one is a youth Indigenous program. We have secured funding for the youth Indigenous program for the next three years and are hoping to finalize the fourth year as well. And we are working currently with a donor on the LEGO program as well. They've requested funding for a mobile health unit for the Grand Prairie and Region area that we are currently working with a donor on as well. Enhance mental health equipment, so that's everything from a snuslin room to equipment that they need within the facilities that they operate. And then a youth and family transitional housing and a house that they would like to see built that youth can access between in-service, inpatient services and out-service patients, so somewhere they can go as they transition back into society. Cardiac care, it's a, we would like to see, and something that the Northern doctors have identified as a large concern, is a fully functioning cardiac care unit, which we currently do not have. That includes a catheterization lab in the North and advocacy. them close to home by enhancing, advancing health and healthcare in our region through fund development and stewardship. Our shared goals are feeling safe, which includes equality, fairness, belonging, and inclusiveness, wellness, balance, fun, humor, and adventurous, progress, honesty, communication, knowledge, innovation, and being effective, impact, service, love, compassion, and community, and quality, integrity, and duty in being committed. We identified critical success indicators, demonstrating impact, equipment funded, programming funded, professional development as well, communication, which we are struggling with currently because of turnover in that area and some illnesses, advocacy, so advocating for healthcare needs for Northern Alberta and for our region in specific, connectivity, remaining connected to the different groups within our region, including our MLAs, our MP and city council, as well as county and the MD of Greenview, adequately resourced internal teams, so continuing to professionally develop our philanthropic team, fund development sustainability, so looking at the long term of where our funds are going, which means in increasing and in growing our endowment fund for long-term viability of not just healthcare, but of the foundation as well, and maintaining a governance board. Goals, our North Star or number one, or BHAG, whatever you want to call it, is to grow a 10-year average year-on-year fund development capacity target of $7.5 million by 2029, and ensuring a sustainable financial base to support future initiatives. Strategic, increase awareness of funding in our region, prospect, attract, and retain new donors, engage with donors, strengthen endowments, philanthropic employer of choice, actively advocate for enhanced healthcare within our region, and to align funding initiatives with our health authority priorities. So part of our key funding development pillars, first one is sustainability, so this includes our endowment campaign, which we have not launched at this point, but are currently working on, increasing our monthly giving, or our circle of care, as we call it, within the foundation, increasing and maintaining planned and legacy giving, as the greatest amount of wealth is about to transfer hands from an older generation to a younger generation, and reducing the taxes that those individuals have to pay in order to, as they pass on, and working towards digital philanthropy. Strategic, the Kidney Care Centre, which we are, the Sargent Family Kidney Care Centre, which is currently being developed at the old QE2 hospital in the old cancer unit, has been approved by AHS and is moving forward. It is a temporary facility and temporary solution, temporary solution under what we're currently working is five to eight years. At that point, then we will look at expanding again. The mammography care unit, which is a partnership between the Alberta Cancer Foundation and ourselves and other foundations within the North, so bringing a mobile unit to the back to the North, which will serve in the smaller rural communities, almost 72 different communities it'll serve in our region. And then Wellness House, which we are partnering with Rotary, the Rotary Clubs of Grand Prairie and the Wellness House Committee, to bring the Ken Sargent House to provide temporary housing for people who need that when they come for healthcare treatments. So operational is mental health, along with mental health, developing youth life skills camps. That's something that Alberta Mental Health, through AHS, has identified as a program that they had great success with in the past. And moving forward, there are two different ones. One is LEGO, which is aimed at all youth, and the other one is a youth Indigenous program. We have secured funding for the youth Indigenous program for the next three years and are hoping to finalize the fourth year as well. And we are working currently with a donor on the LEGO program as well. They've requested funding for a mobile health unit for the Grand Prairie and region area that we are currently working with a donor on as well. Enhanced mental health equipment, so that's everything from a snuslin room to equipment that they need within the facilities that they operate. And then a youth and family transitional housing and a house that they would like to see built that youth can access between in-service, inpatient services and out-service patients, so somewhere they can go as they transition back into society. Cardiac care, it's a, we would like to see, and something that the Northern doctors have identified as a large concern, is a fully functioning cardiac care unit, which we currently do not have. That includes a catheterization lab in the North and advocating for all of that. We've already actually attracted numerous donors towards cardiac care and to the catheterization lab, and it's a matter of advocating with our MLAs and the ministry and AHS as well to fund those, to fund the personnel for that area. We do continue to work forward with primary care, so that is identified at this point as medical community building. So building a community of physicians, nurses, that actually give them an opportunity to actually meet with each other. Research opportunities as something that we've never done, but we are currently working with different physicians within the hospital to work with and bring research opportunities to the rural Alberta. And then increasing our bursaries and scholarships. And part of our bursaries and scholarship is something that we were working with Northwest Polytechnic and the University of Alberta's Faculty of Dentistry and Medicine to build a endowment, which would then fund some of the students that are actually going to go to medical school here in the, in Grand Prairie. And then, of course, we have our ongoing needs every year of equipment that needs to be upgraded or enhanced, continue to expand our programming within the hospital beyond just the therapeutic clown, and educational needs of nurses as well, and professional development. So some of our partnerships, we have a partnership, we have a formal partnership with Alberta Cancer Foundation, Stollery Children's Hospital Foundation, Alberta Mental Health Foundation, the University of Alberta, Northwest Polytechnic, which we are currently working towards finalizing, and then Northwestern Alberta Charities and Foundations. So we are strongly advocating for a lot of our larger foundations to come together and work together, especially in areas such as legacy and planned giving. It is a very complex area of fundraising, and a lot of the smaller foundations and charities just don't have the capacity to do it. So we are joined together by six different foundations within Grand Prairie to bring those educational opportunities to the smaller foundations, and we have received a grant from Alberta Health Services to continue that and to move it forward. And then, of course, there is our, our programming. We currently have 10. Eight years ago, when I started with the hospital foundation, we had two. So we now have 10 ongoing programs which we support and raise funding for, so that they can continue in, within the hospital. Some of these were originally volunteer-led programs, and as volunteers have dropped off of the scope of what we do, we are fully funding all of those programs, or the donors are, we're not. Some of the futuring that we'd like to see and that have been brought to our attention by our physicians, and we've had conversations with the physicians about and with AHS, are just in the initial stages. So one is a robotic surgical suite and robotical surgery services. Currently, it is not part of residency training for doctors, so it is something that we're hoping to bring forward to Alberta and to bring forth in the North. And we've also had numerous requests about a women's specific healthcare center, and we are working with them to try and bring that forward. So just a few of the funding highlights. So from January of 1st, 2022 until December 31st, we've purchased $2.7 million in equipment for the new hospital, 70, that equates to 70 pieces of equipment. We've also approved funding as of December 31st, 2023, which we're still waiting for AHS to bring in, $1.9 million or 55 more pieces of equipment for the hospital. We are program funding, so the, for, so far this year, as of December 31st, was $72,000 towards our programming within the hospital, which does not include the therapeutic clown program. We have raised just over, currently just over $1.7 million, but here it's $1.5 million that we've committed and they are moving ahead. So we've signed an MOU with AHS to build out the kidney care center. We've recently received a donation of 400,000, just over $400,000 to beautification and the build-out of the courtyard at the hospital and enhancements in that area. And we recently have given out $40,000 in bursaries and scholarships. So I just, and final closing, I just want to say thank you to the City of Grand Prairie, past, for your past support and the continued advocacy work that you continue to do for all of healthcare within the region, as particular when it comes to primary care. I know that it's not been an easy road to travel, but we are getting there and things are starting to change, as we've seen with a lot of the programs and the advent of the Northwest Polytechnics Medical School in conjunction with the University of Alberta. And I just recently read about the ambulance training, the EMT training, which is fantastic. So thank you very much for allowing me to present to the Grand Prairie, present on the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital Foundation in our future. And I'd appreciate, one of the things that I would really appreciate from the council is continued support and some public support when it comes to the cardiac services and a catheterization lab, when it comes to talking with our MLAs and the Minister of Health. Recently, I had a friend who needed catheterization services and had to be airlifted to Edmonton in order to get those services, and that's a five-hour ordeal. Whereas if we had a catheterization lab here, we wouldn't have had to worry about that, and he would have been stable much sooner. So it's a little bit personal, but I do think overall, since we identified it long before that, it is something that our region needs and deserves. The, there is currently one being put into Lethbridge in the Chinook Region, which is fantastic for them, but they are three hours closer to the nearest catheterization lab than we are. So if you have any questions.
Well, thank you, Mr Curtis. I'm going to open it up to council for questions, and just appreciate you coming here today and the great work that the foundation is doing to support healthcare needs in our region. It has been a priority of this council in regards to attraction and retention of professionals. I appreciate you bringing up cardiac and cath lab needs, because as you mentioned, a facility of our magnitude absolutely should have that, that amenity. So I'll open up to council for questions, recognizing councillor O'Connor.
Thank you Mayor Clayton. Thank you Keith for coming in and presenting a very well laid out. I noticed that you mentioned Northwest BC, Northern Alberta, and the Northwest Territories. Do you have an idea of what the population numbers, what that represent?
I don't have a firm number on that at all. I can get those numbers and pass them on to whoever would be able to distribute them for you. We are the Northern, Northwestern Trauma Centre, so if there are trauma lifts, they're stop, usually stopping here before they're going anywhere else.
Okay, thank you.
If you get a minute, just, when you get them, just email them to me and I can share them to council. Thanks. Councillor Berg.
Yeah, thanks Mayor Clayton. Thanks Keith for coming in, always appreciate it. You'd mentioned at the end an advocacy item, and that's what I was going to ask, but by extension, we just mentioned hiring, retention. We've got two councillors that help out with that from Mayor Clayton. Is there, you mentioned community, medical community building. Is there any way that you see council or, or resources helping you out with that?
I do. I'm not sure exactly what that would look like right now. I had met with Rory Tront in regards to that and how we could actually partner with the city in moving that forward. I think one of the things that the city does now is by doing the barbecue and opening up the facility, some of the facilities to the medical services and the people within the medical community here, made a big difference. I know the barbecue this summer was very popular and brought a lot of good feelings to the hospital, and that is something that's energetic. As far as the foundation itself goes, we do provide other areas where we do a barbecue pancake breakfast. We take place in Nurses Week, so maybe having councillors, and again, I'm just kind of spitballing at this point, is kind of having some, you know, whether it's the mayor or councillors, come during those times and meets people as they're coming in, because almost probably 80% of the faculty, of the staff actually enter through the pedway, and we generally give out something to them as they are coming in. So that might be helpful. That might be something that we could work together Perhaps attendance at the doctor's dinner would also be something that we could look at. I can't invite all of you to the doctor's dinner, but I'd be able to invite, you know, put out an invitation, and I'm sure the city could figure out who was going to attend.
Yeah, thanks. Wonderful answer. If you guys invite us, then it'll get into our calendar. So thank you.
Councillor Bressi.
Great. Thank you Mayor Clayton. Yeah, I don't know if a politician's ever said no to flipping pancakes. I, it really surprised me recently when I learned about the lack of catheterization here in, in our hospital. It was mind blowing to me. It's something I still don't know a tremendous amount about in order to have those conversations. Do you have a business case or any written material about that that we could get?
All of that will be released after the board has approved it in April. So once it's all released, it'll be made available to city council and to other areas within the, within the city to help us as well. And the county will get a copy of the MD just to help when they're talking with the, with our MLAs. I've had quite a few conversations with the MLAs, as well as the Parliamentary Secretary for Rural Health and the minister themselves about bringing a catheterization lab here and what that looks like. I am not a medical professional. Currently, I'm a fundraiser, really. So that is, we're relying on our doctors for input, which we don't have, so it's not completed yet. But, and it also has to be approved by our Board of Directors first. But you will be provided with that information.
Excellent. Well, I appreciate all the smart people that are helping you make that. I've been looking forward to seeing it. Thank you.
Me too. Thank you.
Councillor Bosch.
Thank you Mayor Clayton. Thank you Keith for coming and for all the information. My question is on the Kidney Care Centre. To my understanding, that we, we are lacking significantly on the kidney side. Can you tell me with this 1.7 million, this eight years, and potential funds coming in from, from the province, what does that look like?
A big part of that is, first of all, we have currently five dialysis chairs, one of which is usually out of service. So we basically have four chairs in service at all times. There is a larger population that need dialysis locally than what we can currently do, and they operate basically what we call two shifts a day, five days a week. So with the new Kidney Care Centre, we will have eight chairs running three shifts a day, seven days a week. By providing funds to build out the cancer, or the Kidney Care Centre, AHS has allotted us more finance for personnel, which means that we've already received one new catheterization nurse, and we're hoping that they will provide a second, another one as well, which will give us enough to run the seven, seven days a week, three shifts a day. So it will also include things, so the cath, so the Kidney Care Centre will also add, they do work where they test people that may be, some precursors to needing dialysis, so that they can track those people and give them ways that will slow down the process. It'll also help, there'll also be a transplant recommendation centre within the Kidney Care Centre, nutrition services, a lot of other services that go along with kidney care here in Alberta, or in Northern Alberta. So it's just a lot of, it is a temporary solution, we realize that. But it was either wait eight years for a full lab or move forward with this, as we are now. So I would have loved to have seen a 30-seat Kidney Care Centre dialysis, but we knew that that wasn't going to help. Part of the area, part of the area, there will be two rooms, currently there will be two rooms dedicated to teaching and helping people being able to do dialysis at home.
That was my second question. What kind of program, home program was, is coming?
And it's become easier and easier to do it at home, but there is a certain population that just will never be able to do it at home, just because of the state of their, of the dialysis, the type of dialysis. So, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks. That, councillor Deason.
Thank you very much Mayor Clayton. Thanks for coming in Keith. Always good to hear the updates from the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital Foundation. So just a little tag on, in regards to the Kidney Care Centre, this should all be inside of the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital, or are you looking to build an accessory structure?
It's going into the old cancer unit at, it's, the temporary facility is going to be the old cancer centre in the QE2.
And at the end of this, are you hoping to pull it out of the QE2 and give it its own building, or will you run service out of there in the regional?
It's better to actually have dialysis services not at the hospital, just because of the inpatient issues and how much longer it takes to bring a patient into an inpatient unit. So by having it at the QE, we can actually run it as a clinic and not as a, as a inpatient service. So long-term, it would be wonder if, the idea is, is to convert most likely the old operating rooms and the operating area into a 30-seat dialysis unit.
Beautiful. We reuse that building instead of mothballing it. I like that. And I learned something new here through that question. I just have one more question, if I may, Mayor Clayton.
Yes, go ahead.
So earlier this year, I helped MC and take part in the Run For The Cure, and their big fundraising goal this year was, I think you were there, to save up for the mobile mammogrammy, mammography care unit, which is going to go a long way to helping people in rural Northern Alberta to get the diagnosis and the analysis for potential breast cancer that they might not get if they didn't come into the city. At the time, they said that they're fairly close to their fundraising goals. So I, when I saw this come up, I was hoping I'd see it, that it had crossed the threshold. How close are we to obtaining that unit?
Very close. It hasn't been made public yet where, where they're at, but with the Grand Prairie, so the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital Foundation went, has a partnership with Alberta Cancer Foundation, and we committed the $2.5 million to purchase the bus or the unit for the, for the North. And by doing so, just because a lot of the smaller, those smaller communities just don't have the ability or the capacity to build those types of funds. So the foundation made the commitment to raise that $2.5 million and opened it up to other foundations in the North to raise money as well. So it does, even though it's not directly related to Grand Prairie, our region is so vast that we decided that it was better for us to take the lead on that and to help along. So, yeah, it's all good. It will be, there'll be some, there'll be some good announcements coming in the next few months from Alberta Cancer Foundation. We don't make the announcements, they do.
All right. I look forward to that announcement, and thanks for all the good work.
Thanks.
Thanks. That councillor Deason, councillor Blackmore.
Thank you Mayor Clayton. I am curious, I know that Alberta Health has, Alberta Health Services has opened up lung cancer testing to people. They don't need a doctor to refer them any longer. They can simply apply to be tested if they have concerns, family history, or heavy smoker, et cetera. I'm wondering if the people in the North have access to that here? This is the first question. And the second question is, what are you doing around lung cancer testing, if anything at all?
So as far as the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital Foundation, we are not involved in the day-to-day operations of the cancer unit, and it's a provincial program, so it's through the ACF. So we, I can't answer that question. Currently, we are working with Alberta Cancer Foundation to secure a medical physicist in order to keep those, to make those services available. So we're not funding it directly, but we're direct, we're helping to fund it through bringing, attracting and retaining somebody in that position. We had two medical physicists in Grand Prairie, but they have since left to go to another facility, and we've only had locum. So we are trying to attract somebody back, and that, it's all about how, what the capacity is, and it's a matter of having those physicians and the proper people in the proper place.
I think it's also important to talk about that, though, so that people know that lung cancer testing, screening is available, and early detection is preferred. I, my second question, Mayor Clayton, is you're doing quite a bit of work with mental health, which is music to my ears, is great to hear. I'm, I'm always concerned that different not-for-profit groups are not working together and, and duplicating services. So I'm wondering, how closely are you working with the other mental health advocates in the community to make sure that you're not duplicating services and making your dollars go as far as they can possibly stretch?
So we work directly with Alberta Mental Health through AHS. Then we have, there is a new organization, or fairly new organization, that is the Alberta Mental Health Foundation, that is picking up some of the slack, or some of the, I wouldn't say slack, but just some of the areas that are being left behind. We are open to, to working with whoever. We do work in a bit of a siloed industry sometimes, and we are trying to break down those silos, and that is part of our foundation's mandate, is to help break those. And that is part of our foundation's mandate, is to help break those silos down and to work together. But through Alberta Mental Health, the Integrated Youth Services programming and stuff, we are working with Alberta Mental Health Foundation to help support that and to help pave the gap in the funding between government and public. But we're always open to work with anybody.
I just noticed that some of the services you're providing, I think, are also being provided by Resource Centre for Suicide Prevention and also a little bit from PACE. So, it's worth a conversation.
Definitely.
Thanks for that, councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. And thank you for coming here today with the update. I've got a question that you may or may not be able to help me out with. I know blood services, blood donors, blood banks, there seems to be a great deal of need for those. Is the QE2 or the Grand Prairie Hospital looking at developing one?
I know that it's part of the QE2 plan, but that still has to be approved by the Ministry of Health, which is, there's a significant amount of budget dollars that would be required there. If the ministry came out and said that they were going to do that, and whatever they plan on doing in the QE, we'd be very much in support of getting involved and helping bring those services, for sure.
If you need us, we can help you for you. Thank you.
All right. Well, that is it in the queue for questions. Again, thank you so much for coming. Appreciate the update and the information. And please reach out, keep us in touch. We appreciate the information.
Thank you. I think I run into most of you, I remember.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks for coming today. Now, moving on to other delegations, we had one other individual let us know ahead of time that he would like to speak to council, Mr. Jeff Keddie, if you wanted to come forward. Get set up. Once you're in your seat, if you can just introduce yourself for those who are watching online. And thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council. It's Jeff Keddie. I'm here to talk about the stormwater utility charges. So, this journey for us started about a week and a half ago when we looked at our lots up on the north end of town, and we tried to figure out the impact that this would have on us. It basically took our stormwater charges from just over 5,000 a year to 30,000. So, obviously, we were curious, how does this affect other businesses in town? So, we started running some numbers. I think I provided them to council just on some that I've looked at. Superstore is roughly the same area as us, 44,000 square meters. They're going to pay just over 11,000 or just about 11,000 a year. So, we're like, okay, same size, same impact, three times the assessment. So, we're curious where everything went to. Like I say, I've provided you guys some numbers up there with the percents up, percent downs, different businesses are paying. What we've kind of looked at, and I've talked to some other businesses, that this tax, and I'm going to call it a tax, we can call it a utility charge, it's still a burden on the business. We ran some numbers, and it seems to really hit large-area businesses, large lots with low-value buildings harder than most. I look at the effects it's going to have in the Richmond Industrial Park, and it actually worries me. When a person wants to rent a building, they're going to get told they have an extra $600 charge a month or an extra $900 charge a month. They're going to look to the county and say, I don't have to pay that there. It just doesn't quite seem right. Most of the homes in GP will see a break. I did a little breakdown on there, on the effects it'll have there. A lot of the large lots in town, because of where the cap is at the 12,800 square meters, they see a break. I understand the whole point of this utility is to gain churches, schools, places that don't pay tax already, because now you can use your utility charge to get money from them. If this was a straight offset, we wouldn't see the increases that the lots like mine are seeing. So, when everyone else needs a break and we see an increase, this increase is coming off the backs of small businesses who own lots in the city. We've talked to council. I have. My father Glenn's phoned a lot. And we've been told by some councillors that this is an unfair tax to us at times. It'll be unfair to 60 or more businesses, but we have to be fair to the large, the larger ones. It's a utility tax on water drainage. Fair is your land size. It's hard to cap that. So, I do have some questions with the whole process that's coming. One is, how will the appeal process work? Will there be appeal? Can we start appealing it now before it comes into effect on June 1st? Or is it July 1st? I forget which date. July 1st. Will there be considerations for businesses that are running on multiple lots that are adjoining each other, touching, that have common ownership or related ownership? I know I've talked to this to a few councillors, and it can't be a single owner. There's transition plans that a lot of families have in place. There's tax reasons why maybe a father and son might own part of the same business in a part of different lots, but it still acts as one. And really, when you look at those succession plans, they shouldn't be changed due to a stormwater utility. Another question I know has been brought up, and some other gentlemen are here too. Will gravel be looked at as a quasi-permeable surface? Which it is defined as quasi-permeable. It's not quite like concrete, but it does allow soak in some water. And I think that a lot of people are curious on that. This is coming out really soon, and I talked to a lot of people. There's been one person I talked to who realized this was coming. And I know you've done your consultations, but I don't think the general public quite knows what's happening. So, I'm just putting that out there. I've seen the feedback on the police force. I've seen the feedback in other cases. When a guy gets a $912 bill in the mail come July 1st, you're going to get feedback. That'll come. To me, it comes right down to fairness. Right off your webpage, the benefits of the system, this is a user-pay model that is based on principles of fairness, equity, and efficiency. Stormwater utility charges reflect our commitment to a fair distribution of cost, ensuring those who benefit from the stormwater system continue proportionately. I have a neighbor across the street from us, Quop. He has an empty lot that's roughly 5,000 square meters. It's gravel. There's no buildings on it. It's basically empty. He is going to be charged with this new system, $4,050 a year. The mall is 17 and a half times its size. The mall will pay 11,000 a year. The mall will see an $87,000 reduction in land tax. So, here's a small gravelled lot that's paying one-third of what the mall is, and it's 17 and a half times its size. It just doesn't look like it's an equal distribution of their contribution. Not magnifies it when we talk about small ones. How about my business? I'm half the size of the mall, and I'm paying three times the amount. Superstore, it's half the size of the lot of the mall. It's paying the same rate. There's some flaws in this system. And I know I've talked to most of you about that, or Glenn has. I just wanted to bring it out that the people in the city, when this comes out, they're going to be shocked, especially the small businesses. It seems like it gives the breaks to the big power centers, the malls, the pipeyards, and not the other businesses in town, quite to the same effect. Do we expect an increase? You bet. Should the guy who has a gravel lot be paying $34 a year? Nope. He needs to pay more. But does he need to pay 1,027% more? Maybe not. That's all I wanted to bring up. I gladly answer questions or...
Perfect. Well, thank you for your presentation today. In regards to questions, in our delegation process, questions and conversations where council has an opportunity to speak to administration happens towards the end of our meeting, so you're more than welcome to stick around. What I will do now is open it up to council in case they have any questions for Mr. Keddie. And with that, I see no one in the queue, but please stick around and there'll be open conversation that will probably address your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, moving on, councillor, item number seven on today's agenda under reports, 7.1, Storm Drainage Bylaw, Stormwater Drainage Bylaw. I will turn this over to Mr. Glavin for introduction. And then remind council, after Mr. Glavin has done his introduction, there'll be an opportunity for questions before we go to any business arising. Mr. Glavin.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. A bit of a lengthy introduction to start this one off. But the city's stormwater system manages water runoff from properties to prevent flooding. So, as water falls onto impervious surfaces such as rooftops, sidewalks, parking lots, this water becomes runoff that needs to be collected to prevent flooding. This collection is facilitated by infrastructure such as storm drains, gutters, and catch basins. Once collected, it enters our conveyance system, which is pipes and ditches that flow in the water to a retention facility like a storm pond or an outfall like Bear Creek. The storm system is maintained through regular inspections that trigger the cleaning removal of debris through things like storm, street sweeping and flushing, vegetation management, repair and replacement, sediment and pollution control, public education, and emergency response planning for things like a chemical discharge into the storm system. The stormwater utility model was first introduced as a concept in February 2019. Since that time, models ranging from a uniform fixed-rate option that would charge all properties the same amount, regardless of size, to an impervious area model that would charge all properties based on their impervious areas without a cap have been explored. In April 2022, administration was directed to conduct public consultation for a stormwater utility that considered two models, one being the impervious surface area model that we're looking at today, and the second being an assessment-based model with impervious surface area modifiers. Following consultation, administration brought forward a report that recommended the implementation of an impervious surface area model that was endorsed by council in September of 2022. At the January 23rd, 2023 council meeting, council approved some additional recommendations that guided the development of the utility. At the June 12th, 2023 council meeting, council directed administration to enter negotiations with Aqua Terra to provide billing services from the utility, which brings us to today. So, with the stormwater utility, moving stormwater system costs from being a tax-funded to a user-pay model seeks to align the cost of system usage with the revenue collected from those benefiting. There are currently numerous municipalities throughout Alberta that have implemented a stormwater utility, as well as many throughout Canada and the United States. This model, the model currently being considered by council, seeks to balance fairness, equity, and efficiency while transitioning from the current taxation model that doesn't attempt to account for a parcel's use of the stormwater system to one that attempts to allocate based on the size of the impervious area of the parcel. So, the impact of doing this, to most simply generalize it anyways, is that low-density, low-assessment properties will pay a higher overall cost, and higher-density, higher-assessment properties will pay a lower overall cost. For example, if you had a high-density office building, they may cap out a tier-three rate of $163 a month, but they may save a couple thousand dollars a month in tax. Whereas a low-density property with a building and a low assessment, and a large yard may be in tier-six, paying $916 a month, but only save a few hundred dollars a month in tax. It's important to note, though, that although some large multi-unit properties do see a large benefit, those savings typically would flow to tenants of the building. That would depend on the terms of the leases, but typically those charges get passed through to the tenant, or in that case, the savings to the tenant. In response to some of the feedback that we've received since the January 23rd committee meeting, administration has included a minor housekeeping amendment to the Stormwater Drainage Bylaw that's included in your package today. Essentially, what that does is it expands the definition of a parcel to recognize that when a property functions as a single unit for taxation purposes, that it also functions as a single unit for stormwater purposes. This aligns with the current practices, but it codifies it into the bylaw for clarity. So, it doesn't change anything that you've seen or anything that we've sent out, but it just makes it very clear in the bylaw that that's what we're doing. And with that, administration recommends having three readings of bylaw C 1443, Stormwater Drainage Bylaw, implementing a stormwater utility charge.
All right. Thanks for your introduction. I'll open it up to council for questions. Recognizing councillor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Chief Glavin, I'm curious. You talked briefly about stakeholder engagement. Can you, who were the groups that you talked to? Were there any general public sessions? And can you tell us again when those were held?
Mr. Glavin. You, Mayor Clayton? Yes. So, there was engagement opened on May 18th, 2022. There was a public consultation on May 31st and June 14th. Engagement closed on July 8th. There were invites sent out to, just one moment, to a number of industry groups. So, we sent out invites to the Grand Prairie and District Chamber Commerce, Build, the Grand Prairie Ministerial Association, the Urban Development Institute, the Public and Catholic School Divisions, the Peace Wapiti School Division, Northwest Polytech, Grand Prairie and Association of Realtors, and the Downtown Association. We also had some people contact us directly. There were a few, like the Chamber of Commerce, UDI, and RE/MAX that took us up on individual meetings, but we did extend it fairly wide to the industry groups.
Okay. Thank you. Recognizing councillor Deeson.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I've got a bunch of questions. I'm just going to start with one, just in regards to the parcel that was added underneath our analysis. So, if there's one owner that owns, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it. So, if one owner owns multiple parcels, whether they're non-residential, residential, or other parcel, can those parcels be combined into one, even if they're not touching?
Chief Glavin.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Not to my knowledge, if they're not touching right now. A good example would be if you had a property that spanned two lots, or sorry, you had a building that spanned two lots, and that building couldn't function if you sold one of those lots. They would be currently consolidated for tax purposes. You'd have a tax rule number that would be the same for both, although they would be two distinct properties. We would treat them as one, and we would treat them as one as a stormwater utility as well. If you had an additional property that adjoined those, but it could be sold off individually and it was not consolidated, then we would not treat it as the same for tax rule or for stormwater purposes.
Okay. So, there'd be no, between the different classes of parcel too, you couldn't combine that? Like, let's say you had a business on one side, and on a second parcel that you also owned, you had your house right there. I'm thinking largely maybe the Hughes Lake area out there, where we have a bit more rural people with shops on hand and stuff like that. You couldn't combine between the two different designations of parcel?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I believe it would depend, and I'd have to confirm with some of our technical staff on that one, but I believe it would be the dominant use of that. It would be classified as such, because a lot of those aren't subdivided parcels, where you would have a house, and you may have a shop or whatever else on that building. But I'd have to confirm, and I can get back to you a more precise answer.
No worries. Thank you.
Recognizing councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'll have a question later on. I'll get back in the queue later. Just curious, Mr. Glavin, if a business has an operating on three to four properties, they're all touching, but they're all registered separately, but can they be recognized under the same tax rule to help save on this and bring them to a total... Reach the cap is what I'm looking for.
Chief Glavin.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I may have to defer to Chief Whitey, but I believe the answer is no. You could not combine them on the same tax rule. They wouldn't meet the criteria that's used for determining the tax rule. But they could be consolidated legally, but not for tax purposes. But I'll defer to Ms. Whitey if she has additional context.
CFO Whitey, anything to add?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. No, I think Chief Glavin summed it up.
All right. Recognizing councillor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'm just curious about the Aqua Terra billing portion of it. So, if I understand this correctly, Aqua Terra is going to be the flow-through. They'll collect the funds, and then they'll bring them back. My question's more of, have we calculated enough in there that currently, if somebody doesn't pay their property taxes and they decide to not pay them, when they sell them, we get to collect them, plus interest and fees and all kinds of things? And we're prescribed to do that. What happens with Aqua Terra? Are we just assuming that, or do we have an amount in there for so much for defaults, or people that just don't pay this charge?
Mr. Glavin.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yes, we have added in additional expense for bad debts. But typically, we have a fairly high success rate of recapturing anything that's owed to the city. But I can defer to Ms. Whitey. She might have additional context.
Ms. Whitey.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So, correct. We have assumed a percentage of potentially uncollectible. We have very high collection rates with taxation, as well Aqua Terra has very high collection rates with their customers. And that is because they do have steps they can take to force some collections. So, all that was considered when determining what we may potentially need for those uncollected. So all that was considered when determining what we may potentially need for those uncollectible accounts.
Okay, so, so if I'm understanding this, so if, there's a big concern that have brought forward to me from some strip mall owners and office building owners is, is so if Aqua Terra, if they didn't pay their share of their bill, they didn't pay their storm utility bill, would that default back on the property owner? And I guess my concern is, is there's a lot of small businesses that go under. So if this happened to a small business that for six or eight months doesn't pay their water bill, and now they're not paying their storm bill on top of that, in essence, does it, is it a collections with Aqua Terra, or is that going to come back to the building owner, or they're going to be responsible for a tenant that's bankrupt on them?
Ms. White Way.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So the process, we will follow Aqua Terra's normal collection processes. If it does become uncollectible, we do have the option to add it to the tax rule and to collect it via taxation.
We do have that option?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and within the budgets that we had sent, what, what amount of the budget are we looking at as just a straight administrative fees now, just for Aqua Terra admitting this and default of debts and?
Sorry, could you just move your mic a little closer?
Sorry, so, it was about an $8 million-ish dollar a year overall budget, I believe, for this. So what percentage of that is just going to be, I guess, new admin fees to capture Aqua Terra billing it, and also potential, I guess, we're going to have a higher, my gut is we're going to have a few more insolvencies on this than we have through our traditional tax measures, and we have a lot more key through our traditional tax measures. So I'm just worried that these more, these could go collections, and we've counted, it sounds like we've accounted for that, but for those two amounts combined, how much are we seeing that a percentage of the overall is going to be to just administer this?
CFO White Way.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So we've assumed on the full year of operations, $300,000 costs for administration of the billings. When it comes to our potential for uncollectible accounts, we've assumed 2% at this time.
2%, so?
2% of overall revenue could be uncollectible.
All right, Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. My question is in regards to the properties that have more than one land site, so adjoining, touching, and potentially, you know, there is a plan or succession plan for growth for these businesses, and if they decided to consolidate, that'd be from a couple hundred dollars to a couple thousand dollars, I understand, to consolidate. If they decide, maybe through a succession plan, or to sell a parcel, is it, what is the cost to separate them?
Mr. Glavin.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I wouldn't have an exact cost, and that would be likely subject to legal fees and what exactly they were doing to separate. My understanding would be if they, so let's say that hypothetically they consolidated for stormwater purposes, and then 10 years from now for succession purposes, they wanted to split the properties up. If they maintain the same lot lines that they had prior to consolidation, I think it's relatively cheap because you don't have to hire a surveyor. If you wanted different lot lines than what were there previously, it would be more expensive because you would have to hire a surveyor to do that work.
Okay.
Mr. Freeman, do you happen to have any additional context for that?
Thank you, through the chair, no?
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so I'm assuming what it would cost to get into that consolidation would be a similar cost to come out of it, based on, I would like that confirmed, actually, if that's possible, or relatively confirmed? Because if somebody is making a succession plan or a business plan, that will matter to them, right? And we as a city are implementing something new. I think we have to do our due diligence in, in seeing what, how it affects their futures.
Okay, well, we'll park that one for now. Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Certainly, council has looked at a lot of different funding models over the last two and a half years, and not successfully found something that was magical or perfect. One of the conclusions that I've come to over time is that the total number of dollars that we're requiring to fund storm has not significantly changed, and so therefore, the funding model that we've used to collect taxes for storm has not been equitable either. I'm curious, Chief White Way, historically, how much of stormwater was paid for by residential tax and how much was paid for by business tax? Because I am guessing that what has been inequitable on one side of the equation in the past is now moving across the equation to the other side.
So Ms. White Way, the res versus non-res, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So you're correct, Counselor Blackmore, residential's been paying more of the storm costs historically than are non-residential. So residential taxes are about 56% of our total tax levy as a city, whereas the remaining 44% come from non-residential properties. Under a user-pay utility model that's based on an impervious area, as has been proposed, residential share actually becomes 36% and non-residential 55%. The remaining difference, of course, is collected from exempt properties. So that, that should answer your question, Counselor Blackmore.
Just to clarify, because they've never received a tax bill in the past, they would receive a storm utility bill to make up that difference? Non-taxable properties?
Correct, those exempt properties.
Perfect. All right, moving on, Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Just a quick note, under Section 6 of the bylaw, release of stormwater drainage system, it's just not notarized with numbers, so there are references to Section 6.1, 6.2, 6.3, but those haven't been clerically added, so just making note of that for 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3. But in relation to that section, just one lower, release of prohibited materials. So when I look at the bylaw, I look at the, the release of prohibited materials, and there's a long list in the definitions. One of them is soap and detergent. So I'm, I'm looking at the enforcement, my question's around the enforcement of the bylaw. So currently, if I'm a residential homeowner, and I, I'm allowed to wash my house with potable water, but we haven't made the same concession for a vehicle in your driveway, typically you might just wash your house with the hose, but with the car, you're probably going to use soap, which is a prohibited use. Am I correct in assuming that if potentially I'm aware of the bylaw and I see my neighbor washing his car with soap and it's going into the stormwater system, that I can call bylaw on that person? And they could receive up to three separate charges, according to our schedule, on releasing prohibited substance, as well as releasing without a permit and the failure to notify of release, which would equal $5,000. The reason why I say that is it sounds kind of silly, but to the letter of it, it is a prohibited substance that would be going into the storm drain that would possibly be susceptible to these offenses, because we haven't said how much soap or whatever is going into the stormwater system. So am I correct in making that assumption, that it's potential that a residential homeowner washing their car could be fined up to $5,000 and potentially serve up to a year in prison if they didn't like that, that decision? And refuse to pay?
Chief Glavin.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I believe these prohibitions were in the previous stormwater or storm drainage bylaw. I know I myself did not spend any time reviewing the past prohibitions of the bylaw with respect to the utility, as they're not related to the utility implementation. I'm not sure I could speak to it, but generally speaking, if it's not permitted, then it would be subject to fine.
Okay, so that could happen.
Perhaps the city solicitor could elaborate.
Mr. Freeman.
Through the chair, thank you. Yes, the prohibitions don't speak to every possible chemical that could be used. They try to be comprehensive, they're largely mirroring Calgary's experience, which I'm sure is quite well-worn, but at the end of the day, as with most bylaw prohibitions, you're relying on the discretion of the actual officer who may or may not issue the ticket, and their discretion, and what's reasonable in their point of view. But strictly speaking, potentially, you could describe a scenario which is rather minimal and could constitute technically a violation of the bylaw, and so that'd be a area where they would have to navigate as bylaw enforcement officers or peace officers, as the case may be.
Awesome, thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. So my question goes back to adjoining properties. As you'd mentioned, if it's able to be sold to different tax rolls, they would actually have to go through the legal process of changing title to adjoin those? Or is there a method that we can implement where that is open, I guess, and I hate to use this, but for common sense, where somebody could come in and say, look, these are the businesses that are operating side by side, they're adjacent parcels used for the same business, rather than spending the thousands of dollars going through legal costs to, to try to change this? Is there a process that we can implement that wouldn't be too burdensome on, on our administration that would help out these businesses?
Mr. Glavin.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I can't say that we did an extensive evaluation of what that might look like. It would involve the creation of a new data set that we would have to operate and maintain over time, that would then be subject to risk of not being in line with our tax rule data, ownership changes. I can't say that it couldn't be done, it's just not something we complicated, wouldn't add additional complexity into the administration of the system.
Yeah, and again, I just look at the complexity that would be forced to businesses to do something, just to, to pay a fair share, as opposed to over, overpaying. And do you have a rough estimate, I could take a guess too, how many properties in Grand Prairie would be eligible based on what I've just said? I'm thinking 30 to 40, I could be low.
Mr. Glavin.
An off-the-cuff guestimate would be under 100 for sure, but yeah, it would take us either doing a search ourselves or having others self-identify what those parcels are, and then evaluate from there.
Yeah, and I would, sorry, Mayor Clayton, I would appreciate the self-identifying portion. I don't think we need to, to go hunting for, for this. I think more businesses than not would self-identify if they saw value in it. So thank you.
Counselor Bressey.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Chief Glavin, I'm wondering if you could talk me through a little bit about why gravel's being treated as, a hard surface being treated the same as asphalt or concrete under this model, why is that recommendation here?
Mr. Glavin.
Sure. So as I noted, and as we've discussed in the past, it's not purely just the, you know, the hard infrastructure that impacts the cost of the stormwater utilities fees. We have the street sweeping and maintenance of ditches, culverts, all built into the stormwater utility model, and as such, when you have a gravelled yard, and there's a, quite a variety of things that you might consider gravelled, where they're purely, you know, a large angular gravel to something that has, it's more so native materials, where there's a lot of clay and other types of earth that are there, that get tracked onto our roadways and then need to be removed either via street sweeping or flushing from the catch basins and lines in order to have the stormwater facility, facilities operate as they were designed to. So although they do have higher absorption rates in a gravelled yard than you would have in a paved yard, they do contribute significant amount of debris onto the road that then has to be removed in order for the overall functioning of the system. So that is why we've accounted for the cost being similar for all the properties and haven't distinguished between a gravelled yard and a paved yard.
Go ahead.
And, and just continuing that, I'm curious, our current, our current method is we're able to use GIS computer magic with an ortho photo to determine hard, hard surface. Is that possible to, will that system distinguish between gravel and other types of hard surfaces? And if not, what will we have to do to split up the two?
Mr. Glavin.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. So right now, we do use an orthographic photo as well as artificial intelligence to identify it, and then that is verified by staff and engineering in our GIS departments. In order to accurately distinguish between different types of gravel, different types of other hard surfaces, it would be manual, we'd have to either do it ourselves or hire a consultant to go out and take the measurements, would significantly increase the cost of administering the utility, and would, for our purposes today of evaluating it, would significantly increase the implementation time.
Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Chief Glavin, I'm, I'm just curious, I'm going to come back to what Counselor Berg brought up, and in the four lots, operating as one business or different entities of that business, is there a process where they could consolidate? They have to do it legally, am I correct?
Mr. Glavin.
That's correct.
But it is possible to be considered, if they do that, to be able to reduce their cap rate down so that it's not onerous cost, am I correct?
Mr. Glavin.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yes, our understanding that consolidation, so long as you're not changing the lot lines, that it would be relatively inexpensive in the hundreds, not thousands of dollars. Obviously, there's still a cost to the owner of the parcel to do that, they otherwise wouldn't have had to outlay, but it is possible to do so. It's not a city process that they would be doing after it were consolidated, we would then treat it as such for tax purposes and, and update within our records, but it's not a city application or fee that you would have to pay to do that.
So then that would allow them to then be under a lower cap, so they'd be at the $10,000 instead of $29,000 for all properties, am I correct in understanding?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, to put a fine point on it, let's say you had three properties that were all tier-six, paying $916 a month, and you consolidated those three parcels, instead of paying $2,700 plus dollars a month, you'd be paying $916 a month.
Okay, so whenever, if you want me, I have another question.
I got a full queue, I'll come back, okay?
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Counselor Bosch.
Thank you. My question is, what is the projected rate of increase to maintain this infrastructure maintenance and future projects?
CFO White Way.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So we've taken a look at, down the road, so we do, do four-year operating budget, so we did look, currently, we're sitting around 8.1 million for a full year of operation. We anticipate 8.3 million, so a, a bit of an increase over time. This would be due to just our costs going up, so regular inflationary impacts, but again, this is based on now, and we project four years out. We revisit those budgets each and every year, just to ensure that they are, that they're maintained accurately.
A supplement. Is there a possibility that we could look further than four years when we're talking about infrastructure such as this? Aqua Terra does it on their, on their sites constantly?
Mr. Glavin.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yes, we do capital planning beyond that time horizon. We also have a stormwater drainage master plan that identifies a number of property, or a number of projects that we need to do over time to upgrade the storm system that we factor into our capital planning. A lot of the stormwater projects get done at the same time that we do roadwork, so depending on where the upgrades are and how significant the storm infrastructure is within that road right-of-way, we do have some years where we spend significantly more than others, and then other years where we spend relatively little on capital projects for storm, so it's not a linear expense for storm year to year. So you might have one year where we spend a million dollars on capital, you might have a year where we spend $7 million on capital. We look to smooth that out through the rate, through the use of a reserve over time, and in our case, let's say hypothetically, that we had a, in year two of the utility, we have, you know, twice the amount of infrastructure than we did in year one, we would balance that out, or suggest through our FSR, financial stabilization reserve, and then in the future, if we have surpluses within the storm utility, we would add that to the reserve for years that we may have a deficit. But that's essentially how we would smooth out the charges over time, so you don't see a dramatic increase in the stormwater charge one year and a dramatic decrease in the stormwater charge the next year.
Right, so this rate of increase is, is figured out with that in mind already? Okay, thank you.
Counselor Platt.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just a couple other questions, but just building off of that, will we be setting up a specific reserve fund for storm then, or like Chief Glavin mentioned, using financial stabilization? But I, I guess for me, there's a little bit of anxiety wanting if we're going to do this, keep this very, very separate, and so I just would wonder how we're going to, we'll look at the reserve moving forward.
Ms. White Way.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yes, administration's plan was to establish a stormwater reserve specifically, that would be something we would introduce down the road.
Okay, so my, my questions on this one are still back to what, the, the new additional costs, so I- I appreciate we're trying to keep this very separate, and we're trying to go to a user-pay model. Outside of the Aqua Terra billing, you know, normally these would come through budget, through capital, they would come through budget, through Public Works or one of our departments, are we going to be coding all of these staff hours now specifically to that and have some kind of charge back? Or how are we, how are we going to make sure that this is clean? And I appreciate we're going to quarterly financials, because there is concern in the community of what this could turn into, and I appreciate we're not, this is supposed to be a user-pay, but do we have a calculation of what we think it's going to cost for an extra administration, just to make sure we're keeping that level of transparency?
Ms. White Way.
Thank you. So I'll, I'll go with what I think will answer your question, let me know if there's more. As you mentioned, we will, of course, be presenting on these regularly, so quarterly, we provide the financial update, it'll be included in there. Yes, there is, in order to form what the utility was required to be, we needed to look at overhead charges, so admin overhead was one item, where we looked at what support some corporate level departments would be providing to storm. We also looked on an individual basis, like we looked at engineering, what workload that would have, we looked at our transportation parks departments as well. So we have done the costing out, those will be accurately and regularly recorded, so any of those sort of costings will be done, so that you will see the true costing of the storm utility with the required revenue.
Okay, but do we have a sense of what that's going to cost us additionally administratively, I guess, we're going to be doing another level of accounting on this, I'm assuming that, you know, currently it's not being done? Is there, do we have a best guesstimate on what we think that's going to cost for additional staff time or reporting time? Do we have an idea on that?
Ms. White Way.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Well, we're able to kind of set those things up in the beginning of the year with our new financial software, we are able to have that done automatically, so there is some efficiencies internally that we'll be able to implement and do that won't realize a great deal of additional staff time. There is, within the budget, built-in additional staff member within our engineering services department that will help support the model, but otherwise, no additional city staff have been added.
So like a halftime, like if we're talking engineering, I'm just trying to get an idea of a dollar amount of what this will cost us within the 8 million to administer it outside of Aqua Terra?
Mr. Glavine, I think, has something to add in.
Yes, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Yes, so there's a temporary position in engineering, which is somewhat subject to the model, so if we go with the model that is presented currently, it is relatively easy to administer relative to the purely impervious method that had no cap on it, that we presented earlier, because there's a lot more verification, review, there'll be more contests from owners of properties on that one, because you'll be getting into very small increments of land that would potentially be more, subject to more debate. So that is something that we will likely need in the first year, but may trail off over years two and three. And just kind of going to tracking of expenses, so already in transportation, we have a work order system that we know where they're going, so if we have a ditch in Broshue that we need to go regrade or clear, or, you know, do vegetation control, or unblock a culvert, they do track those and they issue the work orders that way, so we can distinguish how much staff time goes for those particular types of events that they would be sent out for versus when they were going out to do a pothole, for example.
I'll come back, thanks, Mayor Clayton.
Council Blackmore.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. When I'm reading the bylaw, I don't see anything there that would address people who wanted to contest their, their charges, and certainly, if, if they wanted to contest their taxes, that's a very clear process for people to do, but I don't see that in this bylaw, and I'm wondering where that would take place or how that would take place. Anyone answer that, this is fine.
Mr. Freeman or Ms. White Way? Go ahead.
Yes, through the chair. There is a, it's Section 5.1 and Section 5.2 of Schedule B of the bylaw, lays out the process for requesting a review of your stormwater utility charge.
Schedule?
Uh, Schedule B.
Thank you. Page 22 of 28, if that helps, council. That's where B is, the actual item is a little bit further, 25.
Thank you, that's all I need.
Council Teason.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton, just two quick questions, but they're interrelated. Of our $8 million stormwater budget, do we, do we put sand and gravel in that budget? Or is that part of our transportation budget?
As in, for winter use? Mr. Glavine.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Anything related to de-icing is in transportation's budget, not related to stormwater.
Okay, so then, thank you for that. My second question, because a big part of our storm system is, is operations, annually we have to clean out the catch basins, we have to get the workers in there, we have to do the scope work, and we have to get all that sand and gravel out of there. Now, this is kind of off Counselor Bressi's question earlier on hard-packed gravel, but what would have a larger impact on our stormwater system and overall operations on a continuous basis? Runoff from paved services and hard gravel, or our winter sand and gravel operations?
Chief Glavine.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton, I'm not sure I'd have the precision to give you a, a good answer on that specifically.
Okay, yeah, no, I think I know, thank you.
I'm going to jump in on that one. Mr. Glavine, can you, a couple things, since I haven't been in the queue yet, the, can you verify the impact of a non-residential area that has pipe, curb and gutter versus ditch and culverts? The impact on our, on our stormwater system, as it, the, the entry at Bear Creek, for example, the significant entrance, is that a measurable amount of difference, or tell me a bit about that?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton, so I think there's a lot of facets to, to answer on that one. So ultimately, the further away from Bear Creek you are, the more you're adding to the system overall, and in the sense that you might have a small pipe or a small amount of ditch in a outlying area that then requires upsizing throughout on its way down to the Bear Creek corridor. There's also, when you look at how much water would be absorbed by different properties, it's definitely variable, depending on the types of surfaces. It also, the subsoil of the area matters as well, so if you look at the city, areas north of 68th Avenue typically have higher clay content, which means they absorb less water, so if you have a development north of 68th, and that's somewhat of a generalized region, so it's not exacting, and there's different variations throughout the city, but anything that does get through the addition, the top layer of gravel, won't be easily absorbed into the clay. So those types of properties, so if you're in the Northwest, the more of that rainfall will make it into the stormwater system than if you had the same type of yard south of 68th Avenue, where there's less clay or more silty loam, or sandy-type areas where there's better filtration or allows for better infiltration into those types of, of surfaces. But ultimately, it's one large system that needs to work together in order to operate effectively.
Okay, and so that system being planned for a one and 50-year
So
Stormwater flood.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So it, there's a variety of standards that have been implemented throughout the city for different development phases over the years, and those types of events change with shifts in weather patterns, better engineering knowledge. I think we have some areas of the city, and I, I'm probably getting a little bit further out of my depth than our engineering folks would like me to, but that were developed at a time that would be probably considered a one and two-year event, and now I think we're closer to one and five or one and 10, and I'm looking at my engineering director who might be able to get me a little better information there in a moment, if, I'll have her maybe send that over via text.
I had one other follow-up on that, just tell me the difference, there appears to be really three non-residential areas that, that councils had the, heard the most feedback on, being Alvinetti, Broshue, and Mountview. Different considerations in each, whether it's low assessment, different amounts, volume of land, but one that continues to come up is Mountview, and tell me, is there one key significant factor in the consideration in Mountview? And it, to me, it comes back to the fact that they're in an annexed area that is currently paying less taxes overall, so explain how that calculation, if I'm accurate, and that assumption that Mountview, if it was paying what is considered to be city taxes, they probably wouldn't be at such a detriment, is that correct?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, essentially, Mountview, where any development that was part of the 2016 annexation is at a lower tax rate for the phase-in period, and in this case, won't see any tax benefit as the tax reduction that was to the city's non-residential rate wasn't significant enough to get below what they're currently paying as per the transition, and so it is a straight increase for those properties, where anything they get charged with the stormwater utility charge, they don't see a corresponding tax benefit.
Okay, thank you. Council Bosch.
Thank you. My question is, again, around consolidation. Now, I appreciate, you know, our delegation coming in, talking about small business, medium-sized business, where I have concerns with this is significant size of area that one landowner may, may own, and they contribute significantly to our stormwater. If they have the ability to consolidate, the one that is massive is then getting away with, you know, $900 a month, where it's, it's a very different scenario with a small business. So how do we, how do we navigate, you know, when you put a rule out, there's always someone who will turn it to their advantage, regardless of the rule, you know, kids not exempt, and so we have to think of all sides of this, in my opinion.
Mr. Glavine.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. That's the, ultimately, a risk of the cap, so whatever cap size you have, if you have a properties that you can utilize in order to cap out, it's in your advantage to do so, I'd expect any, any landowner to do that. The higher the cap, the less opportunity there is to consolidate properties.
Council Teason.
Thanks again, Mayor Clayton, thanks for asking, answering all these questions, Chief Glavine, I got a couple more. This one's around the stormwater utility credit, and my question for you is under, I guess, number eight on Schedule C, a stormwater utility credit shall be valid for one calendar year or a remaining portion thereof. So part of that is under Section 5 A and B, is that a significant investment would be made by the business owner to ensure that a minimum of 15% of stormwater is retained and then later released, and/or 50% as in A and B, or it could be a combination of the both. So if they're making permanent infrastructure investments around their business to get this stormwater credit, wouldn't they just get it every year? Or why is it, the way I read this is, they would have to reapply every year for the investment that they made and that was already approved?
Glavine.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yes, a face-value read of that, this is one where we would, if approved, we would have a procedure developed for it that would more clearly articulate what that meant. Essentially, what that would be trying to do is that, you know, in the event that somebody made an upgrade one year that was perhaps removed in a future year, that stopped, that stopped giving the benefit to the storm system, but yes, essentially, if it were implemented exactly as it's written today without a procedure that more clearly identified it, that is the face-value interpretation, but that would not ultimately be how we would intend to do it.
Mayor Clayton, may I have a follow-up?
For it.
Thank you very much, no, thanks for that answer, Chief Glavine, so I guess, hmm, sorry.
I could come back to you.
Yeah, come back to me, I just sort of blanked there for a second between my highlights.
No worries. Council Pla.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just because it is a user-pay system, and the city has a lot of facilities, I'm just wondering, what's the impact on the city as far as, you know, Bonnet Center, East Link Center, Day Bar, like, we have a lot of facilities, what's the, what's the amount we're going to have to pay into this, this user-pay system, I guess?
Ms. White Way.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton, I, I can get that number fairly quickly, if you just bear with me, and then I'll answer that.
Can I just have one, can I have another question too? I'm just, it's, it's going on to the, like, a big part of this is street sweeping at 1.2 million, so when I'm looking at street sweeping, and if I understand right, we do one or two passes a year for residential, do we do this similar for commercial industrial, do you do one or two passes through like a Richmond Industrial Park or Broshue or those kind of areas?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton, yes, I believe that's essentially what we do, however, it's also based on the material on the road. If there's a substantial amount, we might have to go over one area six times in order to clean it up, so it, it is a bit variable on how long and how often we get to different areas, but, and how much debris, like, if we have a very dry year, there'll be, we'll be able to either go faster and get there more often, if we have a wet year and there's a lot of material being drug out in the roads, we won't get there as often.
Mr. Glavine, on average, I think the arterials are four times a year?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton, yeah, we're, you know, three, four times a year on the arterials, they're a priority.
Thanks for that, that was my next question, is, did we factor anything about pulling out the arterials? Like, I'm looking at the arterials, wondering, I appreciate we're trying to make this all a user-pay, but arterials are kind of a blanket for the whole city, if I'm driving down 100th Ave or I'm driving down 68th Ave, there's no real people on that, it's an arterial road for the whole community?
Mr. Glavine.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. We didn't contemplate taking them out, as there's a general benefit associated with having those arterial roads to all properties, so no, we have not contemplated taking them out at this point.
Can I just have one more on street sweeping? Specifically on streets, I'm just, when the 1.2 million, I just want to make sure for this whole true cost accounting, if we're going to go with that, is this all, is this also accounting the, the time that these street sweepers are sitting in the maintenance shop and getting repairs and maintenance done and parts and all, is that all accounted into this 1.2 as well, or is this just within the public's department on that? I'm just wondering how that crosses through for, if we're going to go to a true cost accounting on all this?
Go ahead, Mr. Glavine.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. So I assume you're, you're talking about any associated fleet costs that would be maintenance, I believe that was accounted for, but I'd have to confirm that with finance.
Ms. White Way, when, if you have all of those answers together, I'll come back to you, if not, I'll move on to someone else for now.
I can, I can respond to the first for now, so it is about $300,000 annually for city facilities' stormwater utility charge.
So the city facilities will pay $330,000 approximately into the storm, in regards to, into the stormwater revenue?
That's right.
Okay.
Thanks for that.
And you'll come back to him on, on Counsel Pla in regards to potential percentage of, whether or not maintenance of the fleet itself is being cost-coded to street sweeping? Thank you.
And I guess on that capital, like, if we're going to replace a street sweeper, if this is where it goes?
Capital costs of equipment, I'm assuming capital will stay a fleet, but we'll come back to you on that. Counsel Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So we've, we've talked a lot about fairness to everyone, and I've really struggled with that. So, you know, our past collection through taxes wasn't fair either, but because it wasn't really transparent, more or less traveled without comment or note, so now we're trying to look at a user-pay system, and there definitely are discrepancies, we understand that. Mr. Glavine, when administration did the reviews of other municipalities who have already implemented stormwater utilities, was there any formula or any model that seemed more transparent or more equitable to both residents and non-residents? Or is this simply not working equitably across the board anywhere?
And also with that, Mr. Glavine, maybe you could expand on, in our reviews, we talked about which municipalities are doing which formulas, there is one that's more used municipally than others, maybe you can expand on that as well?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Clayton. So there are numerous ways to, to do this, so for example, Calgary uses a flat fee. If you are a single-family resident with a house, you pay, I think, $18 a month, if you are the bow tower worth multiple billions of dollars, you pay $18. So there's flat fee charge that is used in some municipalities. We did look at that, we did some calculations on what that would look like, I think it ended up being 35-ish dollars, and some of that just goes to what you include and what you don't include in the fee, that would be the difference between us and Calgary on that. Others use impervious model where they don't put a cap on it, and it's essentially infinitely variable to parcel size, and then you have, the most-used method is typically something similar to what we're doing, where you have a billing unit that's been established. There's lots of variations of those units and what they look like, caps, no caps. When it comes to, you know, fairness or equity or efficiency or those types of things when you're evaluating it, some of it comes down to precision, if you wanted a perfectly fair and equitable system, it would likely cost so much that it wouldn't be worth it wouldn't be worth implementing. And that's kind of where you get into the efficiency. If we had to go and do geotechnical analysis on every property to see exactly what the clay content of the subsoil is, the condition of the gravel, whether their asphalt was cracked or not, you know, I'm being a little bit facetious, but it would be very costly to do. And that's where, at some point, you have to make a decision on the types of materials and how you're going to treat them and how much they contribute to the system overall. And that's what you've seen pretty much all municipalities do. Just if you get to the level of precision of a house has a rain barrel and how does that contribute to lessening the storm system, you could calculate it. And if you had enough rain barrels at any type of facility, you could get to the point where you'd be able to store enough water that it wouldn't impact the storm system. Some of that we've accounted for in the bylaw, where if you can objectively show that you can defer more than 15% of the flows, that we would give you a discount in, on that work that you've done. But it is, it's very difficult and it's somewhat subjective when it gets down to fairness.
If I could ask a follow-up question. So would it be fair to say then that council moved away from the impervious, pure impervious model because we could see it put too much strain on certain segments of our community and gave our, some other segments of our community a much better deal?
Mr. Glavine.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, I think it, it does essentially do a lot of that. And I think it just recognizes that we're moving from a system that doesn't account at all for contribution to stormwater by using any metric associated with impervious area. This is implementing metrics that have impervious area. So in theory at least, it's more fair than the assessed value model that we were that was indiscriminate. You just paid based on your assessed value. But yeah, I think I've answered your question.
You ready, Ms. Whiteway? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So Councilor Platt, on the fleet specifically, yes, all of that's been included for our cost accounting. You did mention the potential, if we were to purchase new, so replacements will still go through fleet renewal reserve like the rest of the city fleet do, so there's no change there. And that's all accounted for in our cross-charge between storm and fleet. So it'll all be picked up there. If, if storm was to require an additional asset, an additional piece of equipment, it would be asked for at budget time like any other equipment.
Good, Councilor Platt. Okay. Councilor O'Connor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. My question goes back, I just read Schedule B, and I do not see an appeal process that addresses what Councilor Blackmore brought up, is if this, it is identified that some businesses that are at risk are being penalized because of how they feel they are being treated in the system. And I understand if we do pass this today, there will be another engagement process? Mr. Glavine?
Go ahead, Chief Glavine.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. There would be information sessions after that. And just to be, I guess, just to be clear, so that everybody's operating in the same terminology, when administration, administration operates under the IEP2 framework that has engagement, and engagement's an overarching term that includes things like information center, consultation, collaboration, and those types of things. So there are additional engagement activities, but after this, the decision's essentially made for implementation after that. So it would be for information, unless council varied that decision today, and then we would update our engagement plans accordingly.
So, Councilor O'Connor, Item 5.2 says if the owner of a parcel to which a tier-based charge reasonably believes that the parcel has been incorrectly assigned into a tier, then the owner may formally request that the director conduct a review. This must be in writing. It must be received by the director no later than three months following the date on which the tier-based charge, or amended tier-based charge, as the case may be, first became payable in respect to the parcel.
Yes, and my interpretation of this is, to me, that's a little onerous to the owner of the property.
As in the timeframe or as in what's in particular?
Three months. It's a little late. I think if we were to have the discussion beforehand, if we know what properties are being affected, I'd rather deal it before we get into the system, not after, because it's harder to change. And so, to me, I-
I guess it's just the way this setup is similar to our tax assessment. There's an appeal process following, so that this is traditional municipal procedure where you appeal following the time you receive the bill. If you, I mean, when we come to business arising, if you'd like to amend something, start, yeah, that'd be an option.
I have a second.
Go ahead. Yep.
I am concerned about how churches are being affected, and I think it's important. I just went through our annual general meeting on Sunday, and there, we're not in a position to be able to pay anymore. So I think that needs to be a consideration for churches, because we don't pay tax, I get it, okay? But all of a sudden now this charge is coming up, and it's beyond our ability to be able to pay. So I'm very concerned about that.
So maybe if I can jump in the queue and follow up on that one. Mr. Glavine, do you happen to have some examples of churches in our community? I would assume that a church such as St. Joe's, which would have a relatively high assessment, is going to pay a certain amount compared to a small church that has a small parking lot and a low assessed value of the property. Do you have any examples in regards to what churches may expect per month?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I think you already hit on a good example there, is that if you have a large church with a lot of impervious area, yeah, they would be in a higher tier for sure, versus a low one that might have a large lot, but most of it's grass and has a small parking lot, they would be in a much lower tier.
Yeah, okay. Councilor Thiessen.
Great, I got my highlights sorted out. Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Back to the credit system, Chief Glavine. So I'm looking right now, just for council's sake, on 5A, B, and 9 on Schedule C of the credit. So I guess I have some concerns just around the language in this, in this bylaw, where it says the director determines at their sole discretion for 5A, 5B. And under 9, it says, reducing the stormwater charge payable in respect of a parcel by up to a maximum reduction of 50% as determined by the director. Now, the director in our definitions would be our CAO, Mr. Burke, determining that. Now, I'm not saying he's going to arbitrarily let one business slide and give another business a bigger credit, but is administration working on a way to technically evaluate the credit base system on how much stormwater is being retained? And would they apply that so that it doesn't have to be at the sole discretion of any one person to arbitrarily make a decision as to how much stormwater of discount that they get off the utility bill?
Chief Glavine.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. These are pretty site-specific. So if someone were to come forward with showing that they've made, or have the effect of reducing by not less than 15% the quantity of stormwater runoff, they'd have to show that. And that would be a process where they would likely have engineered drawings and calculations that would show that they have done enough to meet that threshold. Like most things, the city manager does have the ability to delegate that to others. So I'm guessing he would defer a lot of the objective analysis to our engineering departments and the consulting engineer on behalf of the applicant, who would be sending us the appropriate drawings to substantiate any of those claims.
So just, just a quick question. Also under the credit says that residential lower-density private parcels would not be considered for a credit. Now, what if a homeowner decided to put in a rainwater collection system, or a rainwater, graywater hybrid system, or they wanted to put a front lawn rain garden to capture all the, the storm runoff from actually going into the storm sewer, which is very easily engineered and very visible from the street view? Why wouldn't they, if they could show proof and evidence that they were mitigating stormwater runoff from hitting the storm sewer, why wouldn't we give them credit?
Mr. Glavine.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Ultimately with this, I think it comes back to the efficiency of, of the utility. Right now, under what's proposed, residential is a flat rate assessment and a flat rate charge of $9.28 a month. You know, the return on investment of something that elaborate would be decades likely. Is it something that is plausible or possible? Sure. The administration costs may exceed the benefit to the homeowner though, which is essentially what we're trying to, we're just trying to avoid some of the situations that would take a lot of staff time for perceivably little benefit. But to your point, it could be done.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Platt.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just want to go back to Brochu and a few of the industrial parks that, that seem to have a fairly large disparity in it. Was there any consideration with those areas that currently don't have capital? They don't have capital storms or they're ditch and gutter. I appreciate they flow into storm ponds, but there's an area in town that doesn't have any storm and they don't have any pavement. And so when we're talking about street sweeping and everything, was there any consideration some of, some of those areas of town having a lower, a different tier or some kind of a credit based on that?
Mr. Glavine.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. We did consider a number of things with, you know, there's quite a few areas around the city that could theoretically be treated differently, going back to my example of just even you get down to the subsoils and how they absorb water or don't absorb water well. So again, I would say going back to the efficiency component of it, where it becomes very administratively burdensome to do some of those calculations and come up with credits. And then you could have areas of the city that say that, well, our paved parking lots don't contribute as much to street sweeping, so we would need a benefit as well, which all of those costs ultimately would get rolled back into the system and would just be higher costs overall. So yes, we did consider treating different areas differently. We decided against it doing the complexity and that there's a lot of arguments for a lot of different areas that could theoretically be made.
I appreciate it's a complex model, and we've been at this for years, trying to figure out a fair and equitable way. I just, it's hard for me when I drive through those areas and see that they don't even have services and that they're going to be paying at a higher level for services they haven't typically had, and they probably won't have moving forward. So can I just get a reminder, how many properties are we totally, are totally being, through our whole assessment system, how many properties are impacted by this, positively or negatively?
Mr. Glavine. Ms. Whiteway.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd have to confirm exactly, but I think it's just between 20 and 21,000.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, I got a new fresh queue. Okay. At some point, I'm going to ask somebody to put forward some business arising, and we can have a discussion or debate on what's in front of us, once you feel that you have your questions answered. For now, I have Council Blackmore.
My question's really just a quick follow-up to Councilor Platt. So Chief Glavine, should we choose to take a more complex approach to determining the actual usage of stormwater? I would assume that that would add to the overall cost of stormwater, and then who would pay for that?
Mr. Glavine.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Ultimately, we'd go back to the same users of the storm system.
So instead of as a resident, me paying $9.38, I might be paying $18.38?
Theoretically.
Thank you.
I'm going to go to Councilor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm wondering if somebody could walk me through if council decides, hey, the current system, proposed billing system before us doesn't meet the needs of the community as we see them, and we say, hey, we want to ask for some changes to it. What are the implications on that in terms of implementation date, in terms of cost of the city? What's, just what are the consequences if we say, hey, let's, let's tweak this today?
Mr. Glavine.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Ultimately, that would depend on the amount and complexity of the changes. Let's say hypothetically, you went from a 100 cap to a 500 cap. I'm just throwing random numbers out there, but that is relatively easy for us to calculate. If you decided that you wanted to do something that was outside of what we've contemplated with a impervious surface area model, with billing units, or even a per-square-meter billing cost, it could be substantial work to do it. So for example, just to do verification on parcels, it's been months. In order to do, to get to where we are right now has been months. Now, a lot of that work would not be throwaway work. A lot of that was verification of the amount of impervious area on parcels. But it really just comes down to how complex the tweaks were.
Go ahead.
And I'm trying to, I'm really mauling over where I personally want to, personally want to go with this, really trying to balance that fairness with what's the practicality of it. And something I'm mauling over is ask for a model that's essentially infinitely variable, but based on billing units. So not asking you to dicker over five meters here, two meters there, but, but based on billing units. I'm wondering for the properties that are above the proposed caps, the highest billing unit cap you gave us was 300, 300 billion units. So I'd assume you've got a billing unit number for every property below 300 billion unit caps. Have you done the work for properties above that? I guess what I'm asking is, do you know right now how many billing units every property in the city is?
Mr. Glavine?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Councilor Bosch.
Thank you. Okay. Hopefully I can explain this properly. Not you guys get to do it. I guess my question is, for this year, our tax increase was 3.28%, and it potentially could have been 2.5% higher had we included the second year of, with, with stormwater staying at status quo.
Second part of the year.
Second part of the year. So can you tell me for next year, if things stayed at status quo, what are we looking at for a potential tax increase and why?
So Ms. Whiteway, when you get a minute, if you can, we talked about this at budget, they forecasted tax increase for next year.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. So I could refer you to the budget book. We have included all storm utility implications in there. So my, just bear with me one moment here. So 2025, we are, at this point, forecasting the 5.88% increase.
That's stormwater utility expenses included, or if that's-
That's assuming, that's assuming that they're out, and that everything is approved as of today, going forward.
Right, but if we stayed at status quo?
Well, if you included the $8 million, if we didn't make any changes, include the $8 million in your 5% approximate increase.
Right, so you would have had the additional 2.5% for another six months-ish. So it's a, the entire stormwater utility out of full year is approximately 5%. So we did 2.5% this year, so you have about 2.5% next year as well.
So if you were to keep a full year of stormwater utility in the taxes, plus the indicated tax increase for 2025 at 5%, it'd be over 10% tax increase if you kept the billing system status quo?
Correct.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Not a problem. Councilor Tool.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I would like to take care of business if I could.
Sure, I just have one other councillor who may have a question. So I'm going to, I'll come back to you, okay? Councilor Burke.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. So kind of a follow-up to Councilor Bressi's question of potential delays, and I totally get if we threw 100 things at you, it would take a while. The one that I'm wrestling over is the definition of parcel and amalgamating them. So I'm not ready to make an amendment today, just because I see that there's a lot of legal angles to this, plus I would also just love to discuss the pros, cons, and potential consequences. So that would be something that would probably go to Mr. Freeman for legal advice, but again, if I was to throw that in there as some reason why I wouldn't pass it today is because I want to see a definition changed, what do you think turnaround timelines might be?
Mr. Glavine.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton, for exact, I defer to Mr. Freeman, but I would say that just as a matter of practice, consolidations required for all new developments. A lot of these are remnants from past development practices that wouldn't be allowed today. For example, if you had a building across two lots today, we wouldn't allow you to keep those two lots. If you were building a new building, we require consolidation. So it's largely an issue just with buildings that are, I guess, predate those practices.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Councilor Tool.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, and that motion would be, I would like to make a motion to delay the vote on the stormwater bylaw, C-1443, for two weeks, which would be next council or whatever administration sees fit. And speaking to this, I am aware of the hard work that this council has done, the due diligence in regarding implementing a stormwater utility that is fair. And today- water utility that is fair. And today, we've had one delegation and over the weekend, we've had many concerns over the last five days with phone calls and emails. And I would just like to understand the concerns and read thoroughly through the emails and make a well-informed decision based on the information that we have received this weekend and today.
So your motion is to postpone?
Postpone.
Okay, thank you. So a motion is in order to postpone discussion to two days from now, and I'll guess the calendar. My head is February 26, council meeting. That motion is in order. Now I'll open it up to discussion and debate, recognizing Counsel Bressi first.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Counselor O'Toole, I actually really appreciate the intent of this and I like the result of this. I wonder if we're doing it a bit out of order in terms of, for me, my preference would be to give first reading to this bylaw?
Sure.
And then postpone, so that if we do make changes, we're ready to pull the trigger on them when you do that. I know that this is something that, I want to take the time necessary to get this right and to make this as fair as possible. At the same time, if we miss that July 1st implementation date, it starts having a big financial impact on the city and I don't want to take undue time to do that. So I think before we postpone, we should have first reading of this bylaw.
I just need a minute to speak to legislative services. Okay, thank you for your patience. As I expected, my concern, Counsel Bressi, with having first reading, if there is changes on the formula or the bylaw itself, for us to have first reading on how it is today, would be to discuss and debate and have second and third reading on the bylaw as it is. If council through consideration has changes on the formula, we shouldn't probably have first reading here today on the bylaw as it is. So his motion is still in order. If council has consideration for changes on the bylaw as is, modifications on a formula, et cetera, that should be done outside of this. So Counsel Bressi.
Could I just jump the queue and just say?
You already have.
Thank you for allowing me to jump the queue, Mayor Clayton, and just say it. Definitely appreciate more experienced voices than me and appreciate that advice. So that being said, I think I really appreciate this motion by Counsel O'Toole and look forward to hearing what the rest of my colleagues have to say.
Okay. So discussion or debate on the motion, recognizing Counsel Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I appreciate the intent, too. What I'm struggling with is I don't want to just come back here in two weeks to have the same debate. So if we're not sending administration away with asking them to change the model or do some things, I just worry that alls we're doing is in two weeks, just getting right back to where we're here. I appreciate we'll hear more from the community. But I'm, and I'm fine with us postponing it. I just, if we're going to postpone, I'd want to know why, not to just say we're just going to postpone it for two weeks. I don't think that's giving anything for administration to go work on for two weeks, so.
Well, and I think Counsel O'Toole did mention why he wants to postpone, because he would like to have more consultation time with ratepayers. So if you don't think that's the reason to postpone, then I would suggest you vote against postponement. If you have a different reason to postpone, whether it's direct administration to come back with something different, then I would suggest that that motion be outside of the current motion.
No, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the motion. I just, my concern is, is that it comes back here in the exact same form in two weeks and it's, to the community could look bad. If we just go ahead with this in two weeks hypothetically, saying that's where we went, that would be my concern with that, Counsel O'Toole. So I mean, I'll see where the rest of my colleagues go. I want to support it in the merit. I just, I don't know if I like it coming back in two weeks unless we're actually changing something about the conversation.
Yeah, for sure. Okay. Counselor O'Connor.
Yes, I agree with Counsel O'Toole. The heart of our businesses, our small business in this community, and we need to be able to hear them and what they have to say. So I'd like to add your postponement to request administration to come back with or reexamine a different model, so that when we come back in two weeks, we are able to at least have all our questions answered, and then we can make a decision. I know that we have to make a decision moving forward, but we need to do this and we can't delay a lot. But I also want to hear what our business have to say, and I'd appreciate if they reach out and talk to us. Thank you.
I think your comments are in order. I will look, I can help you both, if you'll allow me. I think that if we can rework that motion, if you're willing to take a friendly amendment to includes postponement, we can, council can discuss and debate the period of time. I do think that the motion, if you're willing to allow Counsel O'Toole to add to your motion to suggest, you know, postpone to whatever date, and direct administration to come back with a model that encompasses A, B, and C. We can't just ask for a different model, because that could be many. But I guess you need to establish what you want that different model to look like and what, what criteria you expect it to encompass. So I agree in principle, I, I support your intent. I just think we need to work on that a bit. I'll turn it over to Counsel O'Toole to see if he's willing on his friendly amendment. If not, we can separate those, direct administration following the appropriate time, if approved by council for postponement.
I will accept your friendly amendment.
Okay. So once we see it on the screen, are we okay?
Yep.
Let's give administration a chance here. I'm going to let other counselors get in the queue for discussion or debate on the motion as it is in principle. We'll find, tweak it once we see it, but we'll go from there for now. Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm a little bit torn with, with this motion, because I do believe that unless we are looking at something different over the next period of time, there would be really no point in delaying the motion. However, there is no reason for us to rush this. Yes, there would be financial consequences one way or the other, but nevertheless, there is no reason for us to rush a policy that we may or may not be happy with. So, you know, I'm likely going to support your motion, Counselor O'Toole, but I would like to see more concrete things coming forward to justify that delay.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, I will support this motion, but I think there's still something lacking for me. And I'll go back to one of our delegations, Mr. Ketti, said that he's been working on this for about a week and a half. And I think, you know, a part of being public servants is touching base with the public. And I know our administration has done a great job organizing information sessions throughout the years as this has developed. But sometimes, like, you can be sitting in a boat and casting a line out and you'll never get any nibbles and you go home empty-handed. And the other days, you throw out a line and you catch a bunch of fish. I'm looking at our public consultation as, well, we, we had a bunch of empty boats, a bunch of empty nets, and a bunch of empty lures for a long time. We did have engagement, but not to the extent that we might have if we were to actually socialize perhaps a town hall to create better understanding around the storm water utility service, as well as hear from the business community, who might have even better ideas now that they know what's, what's going on here. So for me, I will support it, but I will probably follow with a subsequent motion that we directly engage a town hall-style meeting with our businesses, churches, schools, and anyone who wants to attend. Because I think while we have the attention of our community, it's imperative that we take advantage of it, not only for their sake, but also for our sake. So we know for sure that we're understanding what they're feeling and we can base our decisions based off of what's best for everybody in the end. And that's only after we hear from everybody. So I'll support this motion, Counsel O'Toole.
Been here for a minute while I read the motion. Currently, in your Escribe council, it is written as council postponed decision on bylaw C-1443 to the next council meeting and direct administration to bring back further information with the model. And so we're missing, one thing I would suggest, rather than a specific timeframe, here's the reality of it. So council appears from conversation to be open for further consultation with the community. We want to have further discussions. We appreciate the heightened sense, the heightened attention that currently business owners are engaged. I think that's great, just to hear from them, because this isn't new. But now we have business owners who are engaged and I think that's great. So I don't, and so what, if council's intent is to go out and have engagement, further engagement, bring that engagement back to administration to say, we would like to see the storm model, storm water model look like this, then administration needs time to figure out what that bylaw looks like. So two weeks may be fair for consultation with the community. I don't expect that after that consultation, administration will have time to collect all council, what they heard, and, and put it into a bylaw. So to Counsel Tyson's comment, I think that's probably appropriate. But I would just ask Counsel O'Toole if maybe you're comfortable with just postponing the decision on bylaw C-1443 to provide an opportunity for further community consultation, period. Then we, you can say that, you know, for two-week consultation, let's say. So we'll have two weeks of consultation. Following that, administration, council, another motion could happen to have council, have a council committee of the whole to come back and meet with administration to talk about what they heard in this consultation period. Following that, I think that a motion for a revised bylaw representing what council heard is appropriate. I just don't think Counsel O'Toole, we can consult, rewrite a bylaw if there was to be changes, all in two weeks. So.
Yeah, I totally agree. I mentioned maybe two weeks, but that was up to administration to decide. And if we.
Well, it's not when you put it in a motion, it's up to us.
But with that, two weeks of consultation, period, and then whatever takes administration to come up with a game plan, then I'm good with that for sure.
So Counsel O'Toole, are you fine if the motion were to read council postponed decision on bylaw C-1443 for two weeks in order to have further community consultation?
Make it happen.
Okay. Okay. So that's one motion. We can come back about the administration, et cetera, following. Discussion and debate on the motion as is. Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I will support this motion. I think, you know, I have to give kudos to the media. When this came out two weeks ago, people paid attention. And that's when we got the calls. We got the calls roughly about a week later. I didn't get any calls through the previous town halls or the engagement through online. All honesty, I just didn't. But after the media did come out with this potential program, that's when we heard more from our community. And I think that's important. I think hearing our community is, is what we've always wanted. It's just, how do you sometimes get to that point? So either way, we're there now, so happy to see that. I'm not sure this model is, is something that is fitting for me now, now that I have talked to some people. Seeing an incremental bracket similar to a tax bracket, maybe that's a better method. That's just a heads up to conversations that I've had already. So I do appreciate giving some time to community and business consultation and moving forward to find something that works maybe a little bit better for, for more of us. I'm okay if it costs us a little bit of money and we don't implement it July 1st, because I think we have to get it right. So you don't put a program in and say, wish I would have changed that. So I will support you, Counsel O'Toole.
Thanks for that. Counsel Bressi.
I do appreciate where this is going, because I definitely do want to take the time needed to do it, to do it right. I am a little bit confused about this motion, though, in terms of if this motion carries, are we asking administration to do work for consultation for the next two weeks? Or is this something that just we as council are saying, hey, we want to have more time to respond to emails, get coffees with people, take those, take those phone calls?
Yeah, I think that's the second part.
Okay.
If, if council wants administration to arrange a town hall, sure, that's fair enough.
So if this motion carries and we don't pass another motion giving direction, then administration's going to do nothing.
Right. It's going to be up to counselors.
And I'll definitely support this, but I also want to be really clear on what I expect with consultation for the next two weeks. I know that I first got hauled into a few offices back in 2019, when I first talked about this in the, in the media, five years ago. I know that when I put this in my election platform, there were people who didn't vote for me because I had this in my election platform. So it's definitely something that I've been, that I know people in the community have heard about. But you're right, maybe not as many as I'd wished. But last summer, we also did do three months of consultation that were advertised in media, advertised on billboards. We, we said, I remember setting up, we set up a booth at community events. I remember being in a booth at community events, having people get mad at me in that booth. And also people tell me, oh, that's a really good idea in that booth. And I think that, and then last, last winter during public, or sorry, this, last year during, in November, during budget deliberations, we did give public direction to build this into our budget. For me, I think that we've done a lot of community consultation, gave people all the reasonable opportunities available to talk about whether or not should we implement a utility bylaw. And for me, I, I don't think we need more consultation on, should we have a storm water utility bylaw, period. I think there's a lot more consultation to happen, though, on what's the fairest way to implement it, now that we've had so much consultation and we've made the decision to move that. There's a lot of questions in my mind about how we implement it. I don't think it's consultation on, do we implement it or not?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'm, I'm still, I'm still struggling with the intent of this, because when I look at two weeks in our calendars and life goes by in a hurry, we have winter games coming up, which I know we're all a very big part of. We have Growing in North next week, which we're all going to be a big part of. I don't know when we're going to do this. And I guess we can, we can make this motion today and say, sure. And if it's just for us to have engagement with the community, I think it's past that. I think I do like the town hall ideas and those kind of things. I don't see those happening that quick. And so I just don't see the March, the two weeks being a realistic timeline. Like, I guess when I look at, I'll support it today.
Counsel Plott, would you like to make an amendment to the motion?
Yeah, I would, actually. I'd like to amend it that it's to March the 11th.
Okay.
So we have four weeks. I think the next two weeks are going to be a blur with things that are already going on my calendar. We haven't even got administration to time to even get their head around what this looks like. So I think if we just give them a little bit more time and us a little more time, also being respectful that some people might not be here this week, they might be here next week, and just giving the whole community, if we're going to do this, like, like Counsel Blackmore said, we don't have to rush this today. It's going to have a financial impact. It's already having a financial impact on us. We're already doing this. It's not, we're trying to change a model. And so it's still impacting our community one way or another. So I think March 11th just gives admin and us more time to actually do this than just trying to rush it for the next two weeks.
Okay. So those in the queue who want to discuss or debate the amendment, fair enough, I'll just jump in the queue. I support the amendment. I think four weeks of consultation is much more realistic and I will support that amendment. So I see Berg, Bressi, Blackmore, Tyson, you all want to debate the amendment. Okay. Counsel Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. This is something I will support. But one of the things that I am curious about is how do we, as a council, bring this back to administration? Is it through a council committee of the whole?
So I think there, there needs to be subsequent direction following this. So if the intent here first, let's establish that council wants, the majority council wants to postpone for a certain period of time, then I would appreciate one of my colleagues to put forward a motion to direct administration to arrange, schedule a CCW with council, for councils to have an opportunity to come back and discuss what they learned in that four-week consultation.
Wonderful. That's important to me. Thank you.
No worries. Counsel Blackmore.
I do support the amendment. And I guess you just answered my question, because we will come back to a council committee of the whole before this comes back to council. So March 11th is a council date. That's not going to be the day we come back to. But maybe, maybe it should say four weeks in the future. But irrelevant, I will support the amendment.
Counsel Tyson.
Yeah, I'm not going to support the amendment, but only because I'm selfish and I want to keep my vote. March 11th, I'm actually hand-pinned into emceeing the ASHA conference Home for Housing on that date. I know it falls on council, but I had already agreed to it.
Sorry. And, and as to Counsel Blackmore's, it won't be that day.
Yeah. As long as it says, yeah, as long as sometime in the future. But yeah, March 11th is my one day, out of all the days I could have picked, that I wouldn't be able to be here. So I'll support this motion now.
So can we take a friendly amendment or friendly change amendment to your amendment to say a minimum of four weeks?
Or up to.
Or up to? Is council's comfortable, up to? You're comfortable with that amendment? So the motion will now read council, the amendment, rather, is up to four weeks. So council, now you're voting on the amendment. The amendment is to change the original motion to read up to four weeks. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question on the amendment. council postponed decision on bylaw C-1443 for up to four weeks to allow for further community consultation. Just recognize the CAO.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Administration appreciates the motion on the floor. What we would be interested in is if council wanted to give further guidance on what we would be consulting on. Are we consulting on the bylaw and the model that is currently before council? Or are there other objectives? So this isn't to build another model here we're looking for. It really is, are there other objectives that the council would like us to consider in our consultation that we could bring forward to the community?
Yep. So I'll recognize Counselor Bressi.
Yeah, I don't know when the appropriate time this debate is to bring it up, but for me, there is another model that I would like to us to consider and that I'm planning to make a motion, see if my colleagues will support exploration of that. So what type of model very much should be on the table in my mind?
Yeah, and I agree. So I don't think it's an amendment to this motion. It could, yeah, we're going to pass this or not pass it. Do a subsequent motion with further direction in regards to what council wants administration to consult the community on. Various models, including something that may not have been discussed to date. So we will talk about that shortly. But to the CAO's point, if we're going to consult the community, it needs to be defined in what we're consulting them on. Counselor O'Connor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I totally concur. We need to be specific of what we're looking at, but it's important to listen to our community and find out how that's going to work. So I think we need to listen, then come back and make a recommendation whenever that town hall can be. I think we should all be there.
And so to Counselor O'Connor's point, and I know that people in our community are extremely busy, I would expect that consultation doesn't always have to be done in person. Once identified what council wants administration to present for consideration, council can have that, direct people to have conversations one-on-one with counselors. This can happen at a town hall, but let's identify specifically what council's consideration are in this consultation. I see no one else in the queue on this motion. Sorry. Okay, your next one? Okay. So I'm going to call the question on the motion as amended. Counselor O'Toole, how do you vote? There we go. That carries unanimously. Now looking for additional business arising, I'll recognize Counselor Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move that council direct administration to, I had it written out before this whole discussion happened, so trying to figure out a word at best, given this, direct administration to present to council or CCW a potential billing method for non-residential and high-density residential properties, which is infinitely variable based on billing units. Yeah, and actually, just, I'll leave that there for now. But let's talk about this. For me personally, I don't like this, I don't like the tier method. I think that it creates inequity between somebody at the bottom and the top of a tier. I don't love, I absolutely detest the cap in this. I think that there's big issues with saying our biggest properties get a break. I'm also hearing a lot of concerns in the community and concerns around this council table about what do you do with these kind of legacy properties that do straddle multiple lots? And that's only an issue because we're charging a fee per lot. That issue largely disappears if you're just charging based on how much hard surface they have. Same time, this motion is specific to talk about billing units, because I really don't want us to do the work of getting down to determining are we plus or minus five square meters, 10 square meters, 20 square meters. I think that saying that we're going to make this based on a billing unit, so 150 square meters, is a reasonable level of precision that, my understanding is, we've already collected that from properties, and I don't think it's too arduous to collect. So I hope that council will ask administration to do this work.
Glavine, on this motion, is this, if council were to ask for this, plus other models to be presented, is this something that's starting at ground zero? Or is it something that's fairly easily put together with other models that have been developed?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I guess it would depend upon the interpretation of the motion here. If it's an infinitely variable system based on billing units, that was the initial thing that administration came up with, does have very significant impacts to very large tracts of land. So that is something we've already done. Like, that's in the hopper, could be brought back today if we wanted to. So that's, if it's a variation of that system, then that may take work.
Okay, so I just have a question for Counselor Bressi, then. Is your preference to only see this model?
For me, this is the model that I personally think is best. It would be if other colleagues have models they want to see. That's fine. I also know that there's some communities that have suggested, hey, maybe we should create tiers within that, so you've got different rates, which definitely adds complexity to it. And I don't know if others want to explore that. But for me, this is adequate, because for me, this is the model that I think would be most fair, so I'd support.
So a question for Mr. Glavine. How many models could you readily put together to consult the community with? Like, I can think of four.
Sure. A lot of it would come down to variations of existing models. So if you look at, like, the three, I guess, most distinct models would be, the flat fee charge would be one, there would be the billing unit and cap that we have today, and Counselor Bressi's model would be the three main ones.
So I'll come back to whether or not we amend your motion, but a question for council, does all three, as suggested by Mr. Glavine, encompass your interest of potential models? Everybody's good if we amend, well, assuming Counselor Bressi allows us to amend, or we can have a vote on an amendment. If your motion were to include those three models, it appears council is comfortable in that.
I sure hope this doesn't become known as Counselor Bressi's model.
Well, you just said it's your model, so.
Fair enough. It is the one I like the best, but I sure, I know our administration are a lot smarter than me, and I'm sure not inventing it, because that would not go well. Yeah, I know for me, I can't see myself ever supporting a flat fee model, but it's also relatively easy to present, and I think it's worth seeing, hey, this is what a flat fee would look like. So yeah, I can definitely support that.
Okay, so we'll give administration a chance to catch up and clean up that motion. I'll open it up for discussion and debate, depending, or assuming that you're aware that there will be three models presented for community consultation. Recognizing Counselor Platt.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Appreciate the amendment. I think it's good, if we're going to go to the community with consultation, because it's been so complex for us to try to get our head around, I think it's really important that we show the community the different models available and the disparities in each model. So I'm supportive of the motion.
Counselor Bosch.
Thank you. I just want to, if we're going to go into billing units or changing the system to an incremental potential bracket system, is that included in what you're talking about? Because to me, I don't want to limit it to one. If there is a different potential model out there, I need, we need to look at it, and we need to get this right. So I think in this two-week period, there needs to be some research, whether it's us through talking to community, but whatever we do have conversations about can flow through to administration, so they can hear what we're hearing.
Sure. And I'll just remind you, Counselor Bosch, if you're coming forward with a completely different model than as being suggested today that council wants potentially consult on, it won't meet those four-week timeframe.
Yeah. Well, this is complicated, right? And we're asking people to agree to something that is complicated for us around the table at points, right? From changing one model to another model to the billing units, the different rates of billing units. So maybe a month isn't enough time. And then I guess we can visit that at the CCW. But for now, I think we need to leave it a little more open than expecting administration to change the model to just another model, when we haven't given the input to the community as they're requesting.
So just-
So I don't really know.
Yeah, so to hopefully come for you, I, no direction has been given to administration yet in regards to which model council supports.
That's right.
So right now, the motions are to go to the community, consult based on three models. Following that, there will be a council committee of the whole, and then there could be subsequent direction. Yes?
Right, so then why are we-
Because the motion has already passed? Okay, I'm going to move to Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I am curious, we're asking administration to go to the community with three models. I'm okay with that. But I'm curious what happens if the community comes back and says, we would rather have this other fourth model.
So that's my point to Counselor Bosch. If that happens at four weeks in the CCW, that's more, you know, fine, so be it. Motion's are passed, administration's directed to do something else, that's all possible. It just will, from there, take more time.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay.
We have nothing to do but debate.
Mr. Glavine.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. And I think just, you may have answered my question, but just for clarity, so we would engage on the three that were discussed. If someone comes up with a fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th, administration will not have time to scrutinize all those models.
Administration's not going to build models on the fly. Yep, based on Facebook comments. Yeah, okay. Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, I'm kind of 50/50 where I'm sitting on this. We're adding another tier-based model system, and we've already got those calculations. But I hear what Counselor Bosch is saying is that there's other systems that could be included with great minds from our community. And we did recently receive an alternate system that could be evaluated in the bracket system that was forwarded by a great community member. And he had two different proposals. So my hope would be that if we're going to bring forward one other extra-tiered model that we weren't contemplating before, the Bressi model, perhaps we could do a bracket model as well, considering the work has already been done, that it can be evaluated, and if it's a wonky system, administration can toss it in the trash. But I would like to see as many as possible here, because part of my concern with the tier system is we're going to likely see with more billing units per billing unit, higher expenses on those larger properties, and then we might have those people coming in and saying, hey, this is not fair, and we're going to move our operations out of town, which we don't want either, because they're million-dollar tax operations to the city. So the more options, I think, the better. But I don't want to add eight, nine, 10. I just like what's already been proposed with the bracket system. So I'm not going to make an amendment, because I think it's not, unless Counselor Bressi's open to it, but it's an add-on on top of his. So I'd rather pass his and then maybe see if this next one passes.
Yeah, and so when you refer to a bracket system, administration has not built out that system. In order for us to have timely consultation, which council has approved a motion to be up to four weeks, administration has not built out a bracket system based on an email that we received two hours ago. So if in four weeks, council's still not comfortable based on community consultation, that would be when we would build that out, and that will take time. So if there could be a subsequent motion, if council wants to explore another model, it just won't be ready tomorrow when potentially administration starts setting up consultation time, is my only concern. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. What I suggest is if somebody wants to, so there was a bracket system that a resident sent to us just before this meeting, that I've had 10 minutes to look at it. I don't know if it's been circulated to all council. It certainly has been circulated to administration. 10 minutes looking at it actually has a lot of merit added, maybe. But again, it is this last-minute thing that I'm really hesitant to give administration direction today to go and implement it. I think what might be, if this motion passes after it, what might be more fair is to say, administration, come back to a committee meeting or a council committee of the whole with information about how long it would take to build out, to build out a potential system like this, and ask them to, ask them to tell us how long would it take them to do that work before you decide you want to throw this. So it might be a more reasonable way to go if you want to explore it. But today, I'm sure not prepared to give direction today to say, administration, build a whole new system. And I have no idea how long that would take and how many resources that would take.
All right, so the motion on your eScribe, sorry, mine just timed out. Fairly sure it represents what was communicated, council direct administration to present to council or council committee of the whole with three potential billing models. So I just want clarification on this motion. What's the intent, Counselor Bressi, in regards to timing? My thought would, we've already seen, other than, we've seen all three models. So this is following community consultation. So council's directing administration to consult with the community based on three models, and then come back to council committee of the whole post-consultation. That's the intent to your motion, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So Mr. Glavine, is that, so you have three models, that council's comfortable in you arranging for consultation in the community based on those three models. Following that, up to four weeks, we're going to come back and discuss consultation on those three models.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just so that we're speaking the same language and we can not make it the Bressi model, that it's, we got a flat rate model, a capped billing unit model, and an uncapped billing unit model is essentially what the third option is.
They're all models that we have done the background work on and are prepared to have conversations on.
I believe that we can achieve that with all of the existing work that's been done.
Okay. Okay. So we're, go ahead, Counselor Bressi. Actually, I'm going to come to you to close, okay? I got Counselor Bosch, then I'll go to you to close. Okay.
Thank you. I am struggling with this, because we're already going to the public with the three that we've already looked at. And we think we picked the best one out of the three. What if there is a model out there, and maybe this, it's the one that came two hours ago? I don't know. But to limit it to making a decision that we thought we've already picked out of the best three, and not looking at potentially something else that will work, is concerning to me. So if something comes back within this month at the CCW, I want some confidence that we are going to look at something if that is the better answer. And if it does take more time, okay, then it takes more time. But you have to do this right, in my opinion. So I don't know how to get that across outside of these three separate models. How do we add room for potential?
Well, how you do it is you direct administration to explore alternate models and-
Now, are we doing that today, or are we doing that after the four weeks?
You can try to have support on that motion, following the current motion on the floor.
But that doesn't give residents enough time to talk and come up with potential thoughts of their own.
Right. So you would not have an opportunity based on the current timeline, and council's supported up to four weeks on consultation. That has already been passed, so-
So what's the point of asking the community, pick this choice, this choice, or this choice? And either one may not fit with, you know, an abundance of people. If we already thought that the one we chose was the correct one.
So then in four weeks, when we came back, we wouldn't support any of the models that were in front of us.
Okay, well, and then, this seems a little bit complicated when-
Hundred percent.
You know, like, we got to get, give people an opportunity to speak to this, and, no. Okay, well, we'll see where this goes, and then in four weeks, hopefully, we have a-
If you want administration on the side to be working on another model, then I suggest you put forward that motion. So that in four weeks, after we consulted on the three models that administration spent significant time on, and you still aren't comfortable based on community consultation with the models that were consulted on, on the other side, they could be working on another model. But it will take time.
Okay. I appreciate what administration has done and all the time this has taken over the years. That's not the issue. But I will, I don't think an email two hours ago or a conversation two days ago is enough time to add value to maybe a different opinion out there.
Right, so I suggest that you make another motion following this one. Through direct administration, to put together a model that includes whatever you think the elements out of that email are.
Okay, but it's not just this. We have a month to talk to people. So something might come out of that month.
Right, that's why we're coming back in a month to discuss what we heard in the community.
I just, I think we're going in circles.
Okay. I see no one else in the queue, so I'll give Counselor Bressi an opportunity to close on his motion.
Thanks. Before I close, I just, from what Chief Glavine said last, I want to make sure him and I are speaking the same language. So this, for this uncapped one, that's definitely not the Bressi model. But for this uncapped one, are you referring something that's infinitely variable, or is it still tier-based?
Infinitely variable. Infinitely variable.
Awesome. Just to speak to some of Councilor Bosch's concerns, in terms of public engagement truly is a tricky thing, because you're always going to have people in the community who haven't heard, who haven't heard about something. And I don't think we've hit the point yet where we've saturated this enough. That's why I supported delaying this four weeks. But eventually, we need to say, all right, we've heard from the community now. We need to do our job and make the hard decision, decision to do this. And I also think that part of that hard decision is, we need to narrow options, options for people. It's, this is a complicated thing that we've been working on for five years, that everyone around this table's probably spent a couple hundred hours on. And it still hurts my, hurts my brain sometimes. And I think that I want to get really informed feedback from our residents and our business when we go out to them. And that means that they need to be able to, they're also super busy people who have a lot of things going on in their lives and their business. If we're, we could probably throw 10 different models at the public and say, hey, which one do you, which one do you prefer? And very few people actually have the time to dig into every single model that is a potential. And so I think it is appropriate for us to narrow down. Here are the models that we think are most likely to work for the community. What do you think to do? Can any of these work for you? And if we hear back from people, no, they all, they're all terrible, you need something different, then we could definitely do that. But at some point, I think it is appropriate for us to narrow it down, to get better feedback, and also to make it more fair to residents, so that they actually can digest what they need to digest to be informed. So I hope the council will support this.
So I'll call the question on the motion in your eScribe. Please vote. And that's carried unanimously. All right. I will see if there's any other business arising. Councilor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just a question for administration. When I've looked through the different engagement stuff, I'm not seeing a budget posted on any of our engagements. Am I missing a link for something on that, or?
Mr. Glavine.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd have to look and see. But ultimately, for future, for purposes of the engagement which just passed, we'll certainly include all the publicly available information, including the budgets.
So I'd like to make a motion on that, Mayor Clayton. My motion would be that we, as part of our engagement, we present a detailed budget of what the budget will be for 2024, as well as what it would have been for 2019, and what it would look like in 2029. And just to speak this, I think it's, a lot of this is confusing, and I think the community needs to know what we're spending the money on. This is more on the taxpayers right now. We're trying to go to user model. But I don't, I don't think a lot of people realize we're already paying for this. We're doing this through tax money right now. And I think it's important that people understand the overall costs of what this costs the city. I don't think a lot, myself included, when you, when you add them all up and look at them, I wouldn't have thought this was an $8 million impact. It certainly didn't seem like that when I got elected six years ago. I remember trying to cut $2 million of storm capital and lower taxes by a couple percent. And so I, I think that's a big part of the engagement, is people understanding just how big of a part of this community this, this costs for us. So I think that's part of the education side. I think, I think there's some misinformation out there, and I think the more information we're going to engage with people, the better. And I think that a lot of people that I've spoke to are very concerned about the financial oversight of this. I'm not concerned about that. We've, I've asked my questions to Chief Whitey today about it. But I think the community needs to be comfortable with those numbers as well. So I hope you can support that motion, and I don't think that's going to be too much work for administration. I think we've seen some high level of that. So I could be wrong on that, but I'm hoping this isn't an onerous task for administration to do.
I'll just clarify with the CFO. So the motion has stated, you know, the existing, obviously, you've already done, 2029, I'm sure you can forecast, accessing 2019, fair? This motion, OK. All right, you're good.
Thanks.
OK. Any comments or questions on Councilor Palat's motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on that. And that carries unanimously. Any other business arising? Council Bosch.
OK, I'm going to wing this anyway. I would like to direct administration to investigate a potential new program in regards to incremental bracket system, similar to a bracket tax system. And investigate, I mean, look at it and, or explore it to see if there is any holes, or does it have merit to move further? From what I saw in the short time, it has merit. So I, I think it's worth us taking some time to, to look through this process that maybe is the answer. I don't know. But I don't want to throw it away, because at this point in time, from what I've seen, it does have some merit. And I don't expect, like, months of work, but I do expect that, that we look at things in all angles. That's our job, so.
The motion is in order. Council Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Council Bosch, I will support this motion. I think, I think it's what we can do, and I don't think it's too hard to do a little investigation, even a thorough investigation. We may find, once we plot the numbers in, that this is the worst idea that we had out of them all. But we can't discount any idea, because what we're trying to do is something that not only works for the city of Grand Prairie and part of our revenue lines, but also works for the entire community as a whole, where nobody feels like they're, they're getting the short end of a stick, so to speak, or the large end of a beating stick on the other side of that equation. So I'll support this, and I hope the rest of council will too.
Council Blackmore.
I'm undecided if I'll support this. I'm curious how much time and effort we're asking administration to put into this. You know, not at this horseshoe, but in other places in the room, we have subject experts. Well, council knows a lot about this subject. We are not experts. We need to draw on the opinions and the expertise of, of staff, administration, of municipalities other than us who've already implemented this system. And I, I think that while we know the merits and the disadvantages of the three systems that we've currently been presented with, I'm not sure that adding a fourth system is, at this point in time, a good use of resources. So I would support the motion if I could get some indication from Chief Glavine, whether or not this is going to be months to determine value, or if it can be determined relatively quickly.
Mr. Glavine.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So the proposed model that council received an email on was forwarded to me. On the face of it, it looks as though it's a blend of the cap system that we proposed and the infinitely variable system that we previously proposed. So I think in theory, it could be done. It's just a matter of our modeling database and software and testing that. So I wouldn't be able to give an absolute firm date that we could have it back, but it appears plausible that we could do it in relatively short period of time. But I'd have to, we'd have to take a look at it and see how the calculations would work.
So I would support the motion in that case, but I also would encourage administration to come back to us if that is not the fact.
Council O'Connor.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I support Counselor Bosch. We shouldn't discount any idea that can broaden our search and help our community find a solution. So if the formula looks like it could work for administration, I think we should take a look at it, not wait four weeks and then come back. To me, that's no, all right, boom. OK? So I will support you.
Just so you're clear, though, consultation will happen on the other three models while this is being built. We're not waiting.
Oh, for sure.
OK. OK. Would you like to close, Council Bosch? OK. Call the question. And that carries unanimously. Anyone else with business arising? Seeing no one, we are good on stormwater. Next on our agenda is committee business. I am going to take a 15-minute break, and I'll see you back here at 5:55. See you then. Thanks.
Welcome back to the City Council meeting of February 12th. We appreciate you being patient while we took a short, brief break there. We're now on item number eight, committee business. We will -- first item under that is the Invest GP Committee. The meeting was held February 6th, and I'll turn it over to Councilor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Invest GP Committee meeting held February 6th as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue with discussion or debate, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Councilor Blackmore, any highlights from your meeting?
I do have some highlights. So on February 8th, the Regional Workforce hosted a lunch and learn showcasing insights from the workforce research that was completed. That was a very successful event. There was approximately 80 people in attendance. Our current rural renewal stream statistics include 15 employer applications from January 19th to the 30th, 62 candidate endorsement letters issued, 725 employer applications received to date, and 425 positions available to qualified employers. From January 9th to the 19th, nine new commercial businesses and one home-based business license have been issued, and preparations are underway for the Growing the North Conference, February 20th to the 22nd. In events and entertainment, there's a lot of events coming forward, so this is good to hear, good to see. Tickets are currently on sale for Passionate Hearts, which is in two days, February 14th. The Alberta Winter Games opening ceremonies is February 16th. Brent Butt Live, February 26th, and I'm really disappointed that I'm going to be missing that. Broken Love with Royal Tusk on February 27th. Big Brothers Big Sisters Ultimate Escape Boosts and Bowtie's fundraiser will be March 2nd. Snowed in Comedy Tour, March 6th. Women of Influence Awards on March 8th. Gordy Kiefer on March 16th. And the TARP auction and gala fundraiser for WPCA is March 16th. Letter Kenny Presents on March 29th. Hotel California, which is an Eagles tribute, is April 10th, and I think that there's a good chance that will sell out relatively quickly. The Blackfolds Bulldogs, Brooks Bandits, Oketoke Oilers, Sherwood Park Crusaders, and Spruce Grove Saints have all officially joined the BCHL and will be integrated into that schedule immediately, so that will make a change in the upcoming months, but this does not affect any current Storms home games. And that pretty much concludes my report. Thanks, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks for that, Councilor Blackmore. Moving on to item 8.2, the Financial Administrative Services meeting of February 6th. Turn this one over to Councilor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I would just make a motion that council adopt the minutes from the Financial and Administrative Services Committee meeting held February 6th as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Call the question. And that carries unanimously. Councilor Plott. And if you'd like our CFO to do an overview once you introduce it, she's prepared.
Great, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, we did have one item of business come forward from committee, and it was just around updating our borrowing bylaw to reflect a difference in our line of credit. And yeah, if Chief White would like to speak to it, she'll probably do a better job of it than I will.
Ms. Whiteway.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So yes, we are looking for council to give three readings to bylaw C1428A, being a change to our borrowing bylaw. With this one, we are looking to increase our operational line of credit. Currently, through the bylaw, we have $5 million available. We are looking for $15 million. The reason for this request has come with markets changing. We're constantly looking at the best way to strategize earnings for the city and to optimize on taxpayers' dollars. Having the ability to do this in the spring of each year, when we usually pull out our investments, this will actually help us to be able to have a net increase in our cash flow with investment earnings, net of any borrowing costs. So we felt that it was an advantage to have this available to us and therefore brought it as a recommendation forward. Thank you.
Thanks for your introduction. So I'll turn it back to Councilor Plott for business arising.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to make a motion that council give first reading to bylaw C1428A, being a borrowing bylaw.
That motion is in order. No discussion or debate on first reading, so I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Councilor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move that council give second reading to bylaw C1428A. Just to speak to it a little bit, Chief White, we did a great job introducing it. This is just smart, prudent, business organizational, something we probably -- just a good thing for us to adopt, I think, moving forward. It's like Chief White said, I think this better utilizes what we can do with our reserves and how we can allocate money from that. And it's just, it's important to be able to pay our bills at any given time, so this gives us a little bit more ability to do that.
Opportunity for questions for administration or discussion or debate, recognizing Councilor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. My understanding is from the discussion that took place at committee was one of the reasons that this recommendation came forward is the bond market is particularly strong right now, and so we are in a position by using an extended line of credit to actually be earning more money than we would if we had taken that money out of the bond market. So I would just look to Chief White to confirm that.
Ms. Whiteway.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. You're absolutely right, Councilor Blackmore. The bond market is doing really well. Our investments are almost 100% bonds. We do plan to normally take some out at this time of the year. We would prefer not to forego an opportunity of almost, you know, 9% earnings on a bond, and this will allow us to take that opportunity.
So in light of that excellent fiscal management, I would urge council to support this motion.
All right. Seeing no one else in the queue, Councilor Plott, you're good. Okay, I'll call the question. Councilor O'Connor, how do you vote? There we go. That carries unanimously. Councilor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I would like to make a motion that council have third reading of bylaw C1428A at this meeting.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. In order for us to have third reading here tonight, this motion must pass unanimously. I see no one in the queue. I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Councilor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Thanks, council, for having third reading. With that, I would make a motion that council give third reading to bylaw C1428A, being an amendment to the borrowing bylaw.
That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Councilor Plott, how do you vote?
Councilor Plott in favor? I did.
That carries unanimously. Councilor Plott, any highlights from your meeting?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Chief White gave us a few announcements on some of the service areas. So assessment notices were mailed out on January 25th, and anybody that hasn't received one yet is encouraged to contact the Assessment and Taxation Department. The final assessment date for complaints is April 3rd, and administration is wrapping up on the operating piece of audit, which is set for the first week of March, and working through the capital projects for 2023. In procurement, administration's working through the competitive bid queue with prioritization on construction-related projects, and there are currently seven open bids. Thanks, Mayor Clayton.
Thank you for that. Moving on to item 8.3, council committee of the whole, recognizing Councilor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move that council adopt the minutes of the council committee of the whole meeting held February 6th as presented.
That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. No items of correspondence, and today we had two delegations. First, Mr. Keith Curtis. Councilor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. If I could, I'd like to make a motion that council direct administration to add a catheterization lab and enhance cardiac service at the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital to our advocacy priority list, and add that to a march council committee of the whole.
Could I just ask that you leave the date a little bit open? We have--
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
To a future.
Perfect. Appreciate that. Thank you. Discussion or debate on that?
Last time, I'm lucky.
All right, seeing none, I'll call the question on that.
Just to get the motion straight, council direct administration to add cardio service, not cardian? Cardiac.
Yeah.
So anyways, this is a misspelling. Sorry.
And advocacy is not spelled right, but also to a future CCW meeting.
Kudos to our city clerk for picking up all of our words as we spit them out as quickly as possible.
Yeah. Hang on, she's just-- hang on, sorry. Can you pull that back? The CAO had some comments, and I'm just looking for a cleaned-up version of this vote, or this motion, rather.
Just seeking clarity, how we've treated advocacy discussions previously is to have it on the advocacy discussion list, so the kind of one step before adding it as an advocacy priority.
Yeah.
So it was just to have discussion in there somewhere. CCW discussion would be my advice.
And I'll accept that. Yeah.
Sorry, I'm just waiting for the motion to refresh, and then we'll... After we see it there, I'll call the question. There we go. Yep, perfect. Okay. I'll call the question. Please vote. Oh, sorry. And so it's direct administration to bring the cardio lab and enhanced cardiac service to the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital to a future CCW.
My apologies again, Mayor Clayton. I believe Councillor Berg's call was for catheterization and cardiac services.
That's what it's...
I have spelling of catheterization if you need it. And I'm also fine for this. We can get the spelling and the details at a future council meeting if you want. Refresh.
There we go. All right, call the question. Three times is a charm. Excuse me. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to the second delegation today, Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I believe that we've done a thorough series of motions based off of this delegation, so I'll just move that we receive for information.
All right. That motion is in order. Call the question. And that carries unanimously. Thank you for that. There are no notices of motion tonight, and we're not having a recess. We're going straight into council member reports, starting with Councillor Thiessen.
There, that's better, right? Councillor O'Connor, microphone's on. Actually, I had quite a busy week, but not very busy in regards to council stuff, as I had some personal matters happening in my life at the time. But I was able to take in Grand Spirit Foundation General Board meeting on January 26th, as well as on February 2nd, the Grand Spirit Foundation Building Committee was my first time sitting on that committee and reviewing different projects and things that were coming forward. The only real big event that I think, and I think is a great event personally, and I want to just tell everybody a little bit about it because then I'll be done here, but the municipal curling bond spiel that's held annually, I believe this was the sixth annual municipal curling bond spiel, put together co-jointly by city and county planning departments and other people in our administration, bringing together stakeholders from across industry, from oil and gas to engineering services to planning and architecture and other people. It's really an excellent opportunity for us to socialize with our peers and the people that do business in the city and the county, and it's always a really, really fun time. And I end up feeling sore a couple days after because I only sweep with the broom once a year at the curling bond spiel. Yeah, don't judge me for how my cleanliness at home, but it's a great time. So I just would like to thank all administration and staff, both of the city and county, for making another wonderful event, for finding sponsors to provide everyone who attended a nice go-home gift as well. And I would mention that I was the only city councillor that was curling this year. Typically, in years past, we have more than myself, but councillors O'Connor, O'Toole, and Mayor Clayton also made special appearances to socialize with the group that was gathered. And if you haven't been to one, you don't have to curl. I think you just need to show up, and you'll see a lot of the people that help make the city and the county move. So congratulations next year, Dan Lemieux. I hope to see you there, too, and your curling pants as well. Thanks, that's all I got.
Thanks for that, Councillor Thiessen. Councillor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I attended a Peace Health Advisory Council meeting on January 30th. There is another open meeting happening on March 20th that people can register for if they're interested in what's happening there. And there will be face-to-face meetings with AHS on March 12th, which you'll have to register for, but you can attend, and you can get information for that from AHS provincial website. I also attended a downtown board meeting on February... Sorry, last Wednesday, and their AGM will be held on February 28th at the Legion, so they encourage people who work in play in the downtown to show up at their AGM and learn who is the... who won the Art Olet Award and the Downtowner of the Year Award for 2023. I attended the Big Hearts for Big Kids fundraiser, and sometimes we go to these fundraisers and we forget that the intent is actually to provide funds for organizations that do enormous good in our community. And Sunrise House has certainly proven that they know how to look after kids. From the time that they opened in their little duplex, converted duplex in somewhere around 2004 till now that they're in their new building, next near to the casino, they've just helped so many kids and helped so many parents learn to manage difficult situations with their teenagers. So kudos for the fundraiser. Thanks to Tenille Townes for bringing her and providing a great fundraiser. Thanks to the people who paid big bucks for those live and silent auction items, but really, thank you Sunrise House for doing what you do in the community. I also attended ribbon cutting at Panoi 94, which is a Filipino store, which has opened up next to Audio Concepts there. The reason it's called 94 is because that's the year the family immigrated to Canada from the Philippines, so I thought that was interesting, and the store is jam-packed. You need to almost walk sideways down the aisles. I also attended the Bear Creek Folk Festival lineup reveal, and I'm excited that we will be seeing some great musicians such as Emerson Drive on their final tour, Jan Arden, McKendrick, Jig Jam, and so many others, that we're going to have an absolutely fantastic folk festival this year, and so I'm really looking forward to that. They are approaching the sold-out aspect of, you know, can you get tickets or not? So I encourage you, if you want to go, make sure you get your tickets now, not like, not early, but now. And I also was part of some members of council who carried the Alberta Winter Games torch back and forth at Muscat CP Park for that videotaping. And that concludes my report, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks for that. Councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Two things I'll highlight is I got to attend the Gay and Lesbian Association of the Peace 20th Anniversary, and it was great to hear some fun stories and hear some more stories from the decades here in Grand Prairie to celebrate some members of our community that have really made a difference. One special award that was given out was to Caitlin Card for creating really inclusive spaces, community working so hard to make sure this is a community for everyone, so it was great to see Caitlin get a well-deserved recognition. And it was timed a few days after a provincial announcement that, in my personal opinion, was a terrible, terrible announcement. And so I think, more than ever, that association is needed in our community, so I was really happy to be there, celebrating and supporting them. The other thing that I got to attend was with Councillor Blackmore and Mayor Clayton and Councillor O'Connor and Councillor O'Toole, the torch lighting. And that means that the games are almost here. So if you haven't got your tickets yet, make sure you go out and you see a few events. I think we're opening up more tickets for the opening ceremonies because they sold out, but there's hope that we could grab more seats in there. We've got 1,400 volunteers registered and shifted out last time I heard, so that's really exciting to hear how much the community's coming together. Something that is still needed, though, is this week, all the beds are coming out of storage and being wiped down and put down in schools to be ready for athletes. So that's something that, if anybody does want to get involved, talk to me after, and I can help you figure out how to go wipe down some beds. That's the one volunteer need that doesn't require any registration that's still a big one. I'm really excited for this weekend to welcome thousands of kids and coaches and officials to our community.
Thanks for that, Councillor Bressi. Councillor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Attended the Community Futures Luncheon, Impact Luncheon, I think a lot of council was there. Had a Nighthawk board meeting, which most of the discussion was around, obviously, it's been a very challenging season for Nighthawk, but getting ready and excited about hosting a lot of the events out there as well. And then the discussion switched to something a little bit funner, and it was about what does a year-round adventure park look like moving forward, and trying to talk about what other amenities could be added to the hill to make it a more year-round facility. Also attended the GP Construction AGM, and then after that, it was mostly just meeting with community members around our stormwater utility.
Thanks for that. Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Talk about my committees. Combat sports, there are interest in hosting two possible events this next year, as well as Community Futures. We had our meeting there, and we discussed the lack of or reduction of funding sources and also a few loans for the local region. Yes, of course, we did the Community Futures Dreamers and Doers Luncheon. I attended the Grand Prairie Police Service Personnel Committee meeting. I attended a Special Olympics meeting, which will be held in 2025, the Alberta Winter Games, GP Construction Association, and what else we got here? Air Creek Folk Festival, once again. It was a great lineup announcement, and I'm really looking forward to it. And I did run quite a bit in the torch run video, so it looks like I'm sweating a little bit. I won't tell you how many kilometers I did, but it wasn't that many, maybe 200.
And that's your report? Okay. Okay, okay. Councillor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I had the privilege of attending a Tourism Advocacy Summit in Edmonton just early last week. As always, lots of great meetings, sessions, and panels, including our own mayor sitting on one of the panels, which, again, speaks well to our region and our mayor. Had an opportunity to do a lot of socializing and chat with a lot of people, including our Minister of Tourism, along with a lot of the dignitaries with Travel Alberta, and they, by and large, will be here this weekend for the Alberta Winter Games kickoff, so maybe an opportunity to catch up with them as well. And it was great, too, because even since that tourism summit, I've had businesses set up meetings with me to discuss potential ideas on how they can build out a business around tourism. So that was terrific. And then, again, kind of the same theme of young music talent, or they're now maybe not young, they're in the 30-ish era, but when I first met them in the broadcast industry, they were both teenagers. Tenille's Big Hearts, beautiful event. I've only ever missed one, and since Tenille has initiated it, she has raised just shy of $3 million for Sunrise House for this year's fundraising. Stay tuned to Councillor O'Toole's report. O'Connor, okay. Okay. And then, as Councillor Blackmore brought up, Bear Creek Folk Festival lineup reveal was terrific. Really looking forward to the Emerson Drive farewell tour. Again, Brad Mates was in a band called 12 Gage in high school and went on to become a Grammy-nominated vocalist, born and raised right here in our city, lost that vocal performance Grammy to the Eagles. So again, we've got two musical talents that have brought a lot back to our city, and I think it's worth recognizing. And that is my report.
Thanks, Councillor Berg. Councillor Bosch, sorry.
Thank you. I went and attended the Community Futures Impact Luncheon with several other councillors. Great to hear what they bring to our entrepreneurial community, just examples of the assistance and the expertise that they offer people who are willing to go into business. The Big Hearts for Big Kids, of course, who would miss that? That was fantastic, really nice evening. Well, maybe Councillor Thiessen, but you're away. I just want to extend a welcome to the 2,400 athletes, coaches, and families coming next weekend, and look forward to seeing all the fabulous videos and photography out there with kids happy and coaches losing their mind. That's always the fun part. March 21st, I'm going to talk about the City of Grand Prairie putting on a career...
Youth Career.
Youth Career Day at the Bonnet Center. So that will be for career and educational exploration for youth 14 to 30. And they've extended this invitation out 250-kilometer radius to schools and having the kids bust in to check out some careers and opportunities right here in Grand Prairie. This is the first time they've done that or are doing this, and the trade show booths were sold out immediately, or maybe were they free? I don't even know. But there is a welcoming list of booths for kids to go and enjoy. And then, of course, excited to see the Growing in the North Conference this year and what it has to offer our community, and that's it.
That's your report. Councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I missed giving my report the last meeting because I had to rush off to another event, so mine's going to be a little longer. Attended Literacy Week at Ivy Macklin School. I did read to two classes, grade five and six combined, and then had our YAC monthly meeting, and then went to Avondale School as Dylan was out of town. And apparently, Mrs. Dunaway's class sent me a little card, and they said, "Thank you for visiting our class and reading to us. The class enjoyed you switching from character to character while reading. You are very talented, and we appreciate you coming to our school. We hope you'll visit us again." Thank you. So they were asked so many great questions, it was awesome. Went to the induction of our 11th president of Northwest Polytech, and that was a great celebration. She brings such passion and care to the community and long overdue. Went to the Community Futures Luncheon, and that one cost me $500 because I ended up with a Game Atari console, and so now we're going to have game night. Okay. Yeah, thanks. I appreciate you upping my bid. So went to the regional branding meeting, GP Construction Association AGM, and Big Hearts and Big Kids, and they set a record amount of $418,637. That just blew me away. The entertainment was out of this world. I really enjoy it, and I'm not a country fan, believe it or not, but I loved it. We had an opioid task force meeting last week, and we had a special guest from the Grand Prairie Police Services Superintendent John Raspit presented to the committee and promoted many, many questions and got involvement. The councillors from all the schools identified there are many substances that are affecting our youth, alcohol, cocaine, marijuana, heroin, vaping, crystal meth, and opioids. So in our next meeting in May, we'll be looking at changing the name to reflect what are the addictions that are affecting our kids, including vaping. Went to the Bear Creek Festival lineup, loved that, it was great. And I attended but did not play in the curling bond spiel because I didn't want to end up in the hospital with my hip. So it was a great day, and they loved to see me there, so it was good. Thank you very much. That's my report.
Thanks, Councillor O'Connor. Many of the things that I attended over the last few weeks have been mentioned. I did want to say, congratulations to President Vanessa Sheehan. With Councillor O'Connor, I attended the Presidential Installation, the Community Futures, Community Impact Luncheon. I attended, and I think I was the only one there, Building Resiliency to Multi-Year Drought in Alberta, so it was an opportunity. Three watershed alliances presented a scan of the region, a roomful of administration as well as technical experts and electeds. It was a very good, thorough conversation. It was a very good thorough conversation, and I have a book, if anyone's interested in reading it, that really gives a good scan of what's on the horizon. I also had the privilege of presenting awards at the Student Crosswalk Competition. For councillors that aren't aware, it's supported with actually prizes, three classes, age groups from kindergarten to grade 12, three age groups, first, second and third, where they show crosswalk safety through illustrations, through music videos, through, there was claymation videos, there was Lego videos. It was really great, like the artistic talent. This is the second year of that competition, so I wanted to thank Mr. Robert Hutchinson for the work that he's doing at that organization as well. I can say that the kids were really engaged, so it was really, it was a great honor to be there. I attended the, also that same day, something that council may not be aware, I attended a check presentation from Northwest Community Foundation, Community Foundation in Northwest in Alberta. They gave the Grand Prairie Fire Department just over almost $20,000, $19,650 for a girls' fire training camp. So opportunity for girls from our region to apply to be part of this multi-day training exercise, and it was really great to learn about that. So look forward to that continuing next year and potentially expanding into enforcement was the conversation. So getting more girls, more girls engaged in fire and police. Attended with many others, the Grand Prairie Construction Association AGM. Had the privilege of reading the proclamation with Reeve Marshall for Black History Month. Also attended, and it's our first annual proclamation for Black History Month, so that was great. Attended Big Hearts for Big Kids, as mentioned by Counselor Berg. Had the opportunity to be a panelist on a Tourism Industry Association of Alberta panel that was called Planes, Trains and Automobiles, talked about expansion of transportation corridors and networks and how that can relate to moving people in turn, bringing more tourists to Alberta. So it was good conversation. I attended with Counselor O'Toole the Winter Walk Day where employees from our organization, we met at Ernie Radburn Pavilion and went for a winter 15-minute walk. Lucky for us, that day it was only about minus 2, so it was quite enjoyable. But what I didn't realize, I thought it was a local initiative. This is a, across the province, if not larger initiative. So I think it's something that when it hits your radar next year, try to get involved. I also attended a Spark meeting. That's the South Peace Professional Attraction and Retention Committee, who is really rural municipalities, AHS and healthcare professionals, where they talk about rural attraction initiatives. I'm there as a non-voting member, but it really just sort of connect that, connect the rural activities and our activities in regards to attraction and retention, so it was good to attend that meeting. As mentioned, attended the Folk Fest lineup reveal, and I mostly primarily think the headliners are great, but I'm really excited for Matt Anderson to come back. He was one of my favorite from a few years ago, and he's really quite something. Dropped in at the Municipal Curling Bond Spiel, and so congrats, as mentioned, to those who organized that event. Attended the torch relay this past weekend, but I just want to say that in amongst the torch relay, it was, you know, a busy community day for council. We not only had the torch relay, we had the Municipal Curling Bond Spiel. The community was extremely busy that day. But as we gear up for the games that start in a couple days, I first and foremost want to thank all the volunteers. I know many individuals from our organization and our municipal partners are involved in this, heavily involved, and I have complete confidence that that committee is going to host the best games ever. And so for our community, I encourage you to get out and not only check out sports that you're used to seeing, go check out a sport that you've never seen. And so get out and see something interesting. There's archery that many people haven't seen in competition. There's many events from Nighthawk to the County Crosslink Facility in city facilities. The opening and closing ceremonies, if you're going, I'm sure will be, they're always very uplifting, so I'm looking forward to those. But get out, enjoy your community, encourage these athletes, these coaches. In addition to the 2,400 athletes and coaches, there's another couple hundred officials. On top of that is visitors to our community. So if you're out there, say hello, remind people, invite strangers to conversation and let them know more about your community. We, as councillors, really take pride in our role as ambassadors, and I encourage our community to be very welcoming to all the visitors that will be here over the next few days. And with that, oh, I just had one other thing. I too attended Avondale, and I too got a greeting card that thanked me for coming and sharing what's going on with the city and what it's like to be the mayor and how I was their favorite visitor of all time, and hope that I come again. So with that, meeting adjourned.